The City of Boston zoning vote of appeal hearing for October 19th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the provisions of an act extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency that was signed by Governor Baker on June 16th, 2021. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings that it adopted during the COVID-19 pandemic until April 1st, 2022. This virtual hearing is being live streamed and recorded via WebEx. This hearing is also being live streamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout, unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting will be limited by the chair as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise your hand icon in the application via the WebEx event platform. To raise your hand, click the participant information icon. From there, find your name, and on the lower right-hand side, you should see a hand raising icon. Click the icon and your hand will be raised virtually. Click it again and your hand should go down. For those of you who are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. Again, for those of you who are connected by telephone, please press star three to raise your hand. You will hear two beeps when taken off mute. Then it is your turn to comment. Those called upon to comment will ask to state their name and address first and then provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting hosts will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. This is a message for any applicant who is here today presenting their case, whether they are in here in person, or, and this is a message to the attorneys which, who represent them. Please observe regular board meeting protocols. When the board is in session, when the board is asking for comments or anything like that, please do not interrupt. We did, we do mean to make sure that this meeting is professionally run. Before we start, let me, let me take a roll call. Mr. Fortune?
I'm here, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Ehrlich.
Good morning, I'm here.
Good morning, Ms. Dong.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Ms., Mr. Rogiro.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, Mr. Robinson.
Good morning.
Good morning, and from the BPDA, Mr. Hampton?
Morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. So let us proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first order of business, the approval of the hearing minutes of September 21st, 2021, September 28th of 2021, and October 5th of 2021. We need a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second? All those, Eric, thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I'd like to have Tom Broom speak in regards to the tolling on the extensions. So Tom Broom's gonna speak.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. This is Thomas Broom. I'm the Executive Secretary of the Board. I just wanted to speak briefly. Under Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, there were some tolling provisions under Section 17 of that act that do now apply to extensions and other grants of relief from the board. So I provided Secretary Fortune with some recommendations for the board if they should choose to grant extensions that should deal with any kind of tolling issues the board chooses to adopt them. And he'll read those into the record when he announces cases.
So even though, let's see. Okay, so even though the dates of some of these have passed, they are still recommended to be extended to the, to that, to their expiration date rather than today's date. Is that, is that the summary then?
Some, Madam Chair. Some of them were still good today, but the applicants don't necessarily need to come in today to request. They, they may be good until next year or the year after. And the recommendations would solve all those questions. So the tolling, as it applies, essentially if something was granted in November of 2019, it would have been paused in March of 2020 and restarted in June of this year. So someone who's requesting relief could have up to, you know, 16 months or so of still valid relief if they were granted an extension or granted a board relief in 2019.
Okay, so I think, Mr. Rogiro, you, okay, I guess, does Mr. Rogiro have this, this email from you or not?
Oh yes, he should. Secretary Fortune has the, the physical copy in front of him as well.
Okay, so Mr. Rogiro, can you help on these to make sure that the expiration date is correct as we go through these cases?
Yep.
And then I need to ask you, Mr. Broom, is, how is the applicant being informed of the extension if they are not here on this call? Is there, and how is the community being? I guess the question, I guess my question is, how is the applicant being informed of the extent, the new extension date?
The board would need to grant the extension here at the hearing, and then we would follow the normal process for sending the letters and putting the appropriate expiration date on them.
Okay, okay.
Madam Chair, it makes it a little bit simpler. I do have paperwork in front of me, and I'm gonna read the last paragraph of each case, and that, that should explain to the board members, including myself, any questions that we may have.
Okay, yes, yes.
I also have Tom's email pulled up.
Okay, so I think we just need that last first sentence.
Yep.
Okay, cool. Okay, let's go ahead.
Calling the first three cases for extension, case BZC 30745-583 to 583B Ashmont. There are two companion cases, case BZC 30746-585 to 585B Ashmont Street, and BZC 30747-587 to 587B Ashmont. If the board chooses to extend this matter again until October 16th of 2022, that should resolve all tolling issues with this matter because this date is beyond the COVID tolling. However, he would, I would recommend that the board include it in its motion that any grant of extension take into account any applicable tolling. Name and address for the record, please.
Doug Stefanov, business address of 423 West Broadway, South Boston. Madam Chair, members of the board, I come before you with these extensions, asking for a one-year continued.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Stefanov. For any applicants who are here today, for your cases, please put your name and address for the record, and then we will move ahead directly with the motions, given the fact that we already have some, some legal guidance on this. Okay?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion for a one-year extension that would expire October 16th, 2022.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, the question, Mr. Bloom is, Mr. Broom, is this extension to the 16th or is it to the 19th, since today's date is the 19th?
The original, this one expired on October 16th of 2020, towards the last one. So this one would be until October 16th of 2022.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, calling the next, calling the next case, calling BOA 957170-602 Canterbury Street. If the board choose to grant this request, then confirming the new expiration date as December 26th, 2022, because of COVID tolling, should resolve all tolling issues with this matter. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckle, Drago and Toscano, with the business address of 11 Beacon Street, on behalf of the applicant. As mentioned, this is one of these cases typically that would have expired in mid.
Thank you.
I'll make, I'll make a motion for an extension to October 26th, 2022.
Thank you. All those in favor?
October 26th or December 26th?
I'm in December, sorry, December 26th, 2022. Sorry, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 995-699-273 Highland Street. If the board should choose to grant this request, then confirming the new expiration date as February 20th, 2023, because of COVID tolling, should resolve all tolling issues in this matter. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Nick Zula, McDermott, Quotient Miller, 28th State Street in Boston.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for an extension with a new expiration date of February 20th, 2023.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself on the next case.
And who is this?
Joe.
Joe, sorry. Let's see, Mr. Ehrlich, can you help on this, please?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 920014-Forty-Williams-C-Kelly Square. If the board choose to grant this request, then confirming that the new expiration date as of February 20th, 2023, because of COVID tolling, should resolve all tolling issues in this matter. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Motion for an extension under the, the new deadline.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
That would be a date of February 20th of 2023, Mr. Ehrlich.
Correct.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Counselor, is Saratoga and Wordsworth together?
They are, Mr. Secretary.
Okay, thank you. Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 819-243-806 Saratoga Street. There is a companion case, BOA 819-227-96 Wordsworth Street. If the board chooses to extend this matter again until November 6th of 2022, that should resolve all tolling issues because that date is beyond the COVID tolling. However, I would recommend that the board include it in its motion that any grant of extension takes into account the applicable tolling. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
May I have a motion, please?
I'm gonna make a motion for an extension that expires, just to try to keep it uniform, February 21st, 2023.
Well, it would be November 6th of 2022, Mr. Rogiro. If the board.
You're jumping ahead a little bit on us.
I, I was, but it would give, that would give a year from the new expiration, which would get consistent with everything else we've done thus far. The other, the other way would only be, I was just trying to keep it consistent, but.
It is consistent if it's 11/6.
Okay, 11/6/2022, and that takes into account the tolling that's already happened.
Correct.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 694-031-31 Woodlawn Street. There is a companion case, BOA 694-028-33 Woodlawn Street. If the board chooses to extend this matter again until November 6th of 2022, that should resolve all tolling issues because that date is beyond the COVID tolling. However, I would recommend that the board include it in its motion that any grant of extension takes into the account of applicable tolling. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
Is there a motion?
Motion to extend until November 6th, 2022, and that includes taking into account the tolling.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 658-980-10 McBride Street. If the board chooses to extend this matter again until November 3rd of 2022, that should resolve all tolling issues because that date is beyond the COVID tolling. However, I would recommend that the board include in its motion any grant of extension takes into account any applicable tolling. Name and address for the record, please.
John Moran, 130 Beach Road, Orleans, Mass.
Thank you.
Motion to extend it until November 3rd, 2022, and that includes any applicable tolling.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the last case for extension, calling BZC 30642-340 to 360 Boils Street. Madam Chair, this one is a little unique. Mr. Bloom might want to speak on this one.
Yes, Madam Chair, this one, this case has been around since December of 2010. It was initially granted. It has been, remained valid through the operation of an act a month ago, as well as some board extensions. The relevant relief here at this hearing is the fourth extension that the board granted. That remains valid until March 9th of 2022. I would recommend that the board extend this one until at least March 9th of 2022. The applicant is requesting it until December 2nd of 2022, which would also work. That would resolve the tolling issues, and that would also give it a little bit of an extension as well. So give them an additional, you know, nine months from the expiration of the total relief.
Okay, may I have the attorney?
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of board. Adam Hungley from Gulson and Stores, 400 Atlantic Avenue in Boston, attorney for the Arlington Real, Boilston Realty Trust.
So this, this appeal has been active for 12, for 11 years. Can you tell us what is the reason that we should extend it to December 2022?
Yeah, totally understand that. I've been here a number of times. Very much appreciate your patience. Just to be clear, by no means are we land banking or speculating. We continue to work very hard on this project. In fact, just this year, we obtained our final design approval from the BPDA. We're working on late-term permitting now. We're very excited to get started. It's simply a matter of the original Great Recession, the pandemic, the challenges involved in permitting this site and getting ready for construction that just puts us in this position. But we're very close. We're very excited to start. We're hoping the board would consider another grant of, of extension.
I would recommend, please, that we have a note in the file, and we have given you advance notice, because I know Gulson and Stores is pretty expert in this permitting processes, to ensure that this is the last approval and that everybody is on notice at the last extension, because we cannot have approvals pocketed for all these years. So may I have a motion, please?
Motion for a last and final extension to December 2nd, 2022, and that should include any tolling.
Madam Chair, this, I mean, this is unusual, how many requests there have been. I, I would be more comfortable making it March 9th, and, and really putting some pressure on these folks to get going.
So, Mr. Hungley, can you tell us about, we, how, we anticipate and, and, tell us, give us, give us a reason why we should extend it to December versus the usual date of March 9th?
Yeah, yeah. Again, very much appreciate the issue. If, if the board is willing, I, I very much, and the developer, would very much appreciate the extension to December. We would certainly be on notice that this is the last one.
Can you tell us about March 9th?
Yeah.
That is your, your expiration date?
Yeah, just as a lawyer, I'm trained in worrying about what-ifs. So we do need to apply for the building permit. As mentioned, we're going through late-stage permitting. We need to make sure we coordinate well with the abutter. So there are, there are steps, winter conditions will always play a role here. So we are moving quickly and we're hoping to start soon. Having just four or five months would, would concern me. I would hope the board would consider an extension to December. And again, putting us on notice that this is the last one you'll consider.
Okay, thank you. So you've heard the rationale. We have a motion on the table for December 2nd, 2022. May I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I, I want to find out if Mr. Stefanov is also still on the, on the call?
Don't see him, Madam Chair, no.
Because I, I just realized that Ashmont has also been, been on the docket for a decade, if not more. And we just need to make sure that these are not viewed as pocket approvals that will extend, that we will extend into perpetuity. So if, if Mr. Bloom can please be in touch with Mr. Stefanov, and also put him on notice that October 16th is his final date, and please have that in the file and on the plans, please. Thank you.
I'm gonna call the next case for G-Cod, calling BOA 122-8216-340-Beacon Street. This is renovation of existing garage at Unit 1 to extend the existing accessory garage into Unit 1 courtyard with new deck on the garage roof, accessed via bridge to Unit 1 and stairs to Unit 1 courtyard. The violation is Article 32, Section 32-4, groundwater conservation overlay district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is David Lindhart with Gulson and Stores at 400 Atlantic. And we're requesting G-Cod approval or?
Can you please hold on?
Yes.
Christian, are you on?
I am, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the board.
Madam Chair, sorry, Christian, we lost Mike Ehrlich for a second here. Gotta hold on a second.
Okay.
Hopefully he's getting back on. Sorry, Christian.
That's fine.
Oh, there he is. Lost him there for a second.
I don't think I was ever gone, Mark.
Oh.
Okay, let's go.
That's up for, that's up for discussion.
Easy come, easy go.
All right, Christian, go ahead.
That's fine. Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both the BOSC approval and no harm letters from the applicant.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, we have the letter as well.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Eric, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm gonna call the 9:30 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30 cases. If you give me the address first.
Morning, Mr. Secretary.
Mr. Handley, were you gonna request a deferral?
Yes, ma'am, just making sure you can hear me. The address is 16 Baker Court, and that is BOA number 1101370, ma'am.
Thank you.
The reason for this deferral is actually, just needs to be re-advertized. This is a part of, this is part of an Article 80 project that you're gonna hear. They are separate zoning cases, and this is a small building that we were made aware of ISD's admission of a necessary rear yard violation, which was cited originally, but they did an updated review and apparently missed it. So it needs to be re-advertized.
Sorry, let me ask you, is this a connection with both Willow Code 75 and 78, or is it a separate?
They are three separate cases, and, but they were administered under Article 80 together. This is a small project that has just market rate units. So we'd love to proceed with the other two, because that's the main part of the relief.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
Mr. Handley, you have a date of December 7th at 12:30.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 9:30? Hearing none, I'll call the first case, calling BOA 124-5796-197 Lexington Street. This is a change of occupancy from a three to four units by adding one unit in the lower level and replacing the rear stair. The violation is Article 27G. This is in the East Boston I-Pot. Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily use is forbidden. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the open space is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking and loading is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the additional lawn area is insufficient. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioners, Kim and Eric Sinbrana, who are the owners of the property, at 197 Lexington Street. Madam Chair, this is a pre-existing owner-occupied three-unit dwelling where the proposal is to add one additional dwelling unit in the lower level, consistent with the board's practice and policies regarding lower-level units. I can point out to the board in the plans, this does have a full walkout condition to the rear. We enter the building on Lexington Street. The slope of the land slopes dramatically down the hill towards Princeton Street, and we do have a clear ceiling height of seven feet, 10 inches for the walkout portion. I do have the floor plans here up on the screen that do show the only work that is being proposed in the occupied building is the work in the lower-level basement. This would be a studio unit roughly around 430 or so square feet, and we are proposing to make this change, consistent again with the board's policy. We've expected a zoning relief. This is located at 3F 2000 District. As I said, this is a pre-existing, non-conforming, three-family structure. Our changes that we're proposing essentially trigger all of the existing non-conformities with respect to dimension on the building now. We're not proposing any height addition or rear addition of the. We're not proposing any height addition or rear addition of the building. There is some modification to the rear stairwell, but with respect to the items that have been cited, those are already existing conditions already under Article 53 that would not conform. Specifically, FAR would be increased by capturing that lower-level space for usable housing spaces.
Mr. Lins, this is a 3F 2000. What's the lot size? I'm sorry, 3F 2000, what's the lot size?
Pre-existing lot size, 1,150 square feet, and it's typical for all of those lots on that side of Lexington Street.
So tell me, it looks like this applicant already has a high use of the property. Why should this relief be granted for this additional space?
So, Madam Chair, we did actually explore the additional dwelling unit program in the city of Boston. I know that they're, because this is owner-occupied, they would be eligible for ADU. There are a number of limitations, however, with ADU because of the ownership, and I'm not really certain that a lot of lenders right now understand how ADU works, especially with the restrictions on time. My recommendation as counsel was to pursue this, consistent with ADU, but to do this as a full approval for a four-unit dwelling. So that's the reason why we're requesting the relief that's before the board today.
Well, the difference with the ADU is that it means that the unit is live as long as its owner occupied. With that, it means that an investor could purchase this property and as of right, have four units with one smaller unit in the basement. And so that has implications for land use and operations, et cetera.
No doubt. And my clients have no intention of vacating. They do, again, they occupy the property as their property residents. But in exploring the opportunity under ADU, and this is no disrespect to the ADU program, as a practitioner, I think there are some practical difficulties with ADU, especially when it comes to financing of a property, a multi-unit property. Because of that restriction, that if it is not owner-occupied, there is this, I guess, potential for modification of the building as a result. And I think lenders, from what I'm experiencing, have some concern over that existing. So while ADU makes sense, it does create some challenges for future financing on the property.
Yeah, I think our perspectives, and I need to note this for the board, is that, you know, we need to look at it from a land use perspective versus a finance, financial perspective. So given that, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine, confirming the proponent's proposal. It is a full walkout in the rear and it does have adequate ceiling height, so no questions about the proposal.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Lins, what is the current use of the basement?
It's storage, mechanicals, et cetera. I believe they carved out sufficient space in the plan to allow for access by the entire building for mechanicals.
So there'll be, what happens to storage?
Well, it's storage in the sense that it's available space that's not habitable.
No, what happens if this is approved, the storage? There will be no storage, right?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be more clear. This is not a condo, it's rental property, so the tenants do not have access for storage in the basement. When I said storage, I meant general non-habitable space.
It is, as the Chair said, sort of maximum use of the space.
Understood. And again, the condition of an ADU, being a permissible use here, we feel that just based upon long-term use for the property, including financing considerations, I understand some board's concern, but it would make sense to have this approved as a form.
I'm just gonna add a little piece here. In my neighborhood, the price of a unit with an ADU makes it kind of unreachable to a lot of people in the neighborhood. So it increased the price by about $300,000. But I'll just put that on the record. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this project?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. The Office of Neighborhood Services held an abutters meeting on June 29, 2021, where the applicant addressed the concerns of the attendees. And since there are no changes on the footprint of the building and they will be operating the safety of the building, we would like to go on the record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Bonetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. Counselor would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I will, for the record, being, putting my voice in in opposition, but the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 124-5852, 218 Brook Street. This is erect in addition with roof deck and change occupancy from a three-unit residential dwelling. The violation is Article 53, Section 8, a multifamily is forbidden in the 2F 2000 sub-district. Article 53, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 53, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 27T-5, this is in the East Boston iPod. Article 53, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. And Article 53, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Sumner Street, East Boston. On behalf of the petitioner, Madam Chair, this is a pre-existing two-family, two-and-a-half-story dwelling in the Eagle Hills section of East Boston. This proposal would involve the complete rehabilitation of the building, including upgrades to life safety. The proposal would incorporate the upper-level space into a habitable independent unit. We would be essentially squaring the building off, consistent with the architecture and design of buildings along that section of Brook Street as well. This is in a 2F 2000 District, and as a result, even though the change is somewhat minor to the upper level, we would trigger several violations for the pre-existing, non-conforming conditions that already exist on the property, including the side yard and the rear yard. This is a shallow lot, and although this lot would not conform to the requirements in Article 53 for the full graveyard setback, the existing condition that is already non-conforming would be in compliance. With respect to the off-street parking, we are proposing only adding one additional dwelling unit, and therefore, only one parking space would be required. Consistent with, I think, past practice of this board and the city, the desires to not see the creation of a curb cut, if in fact one was even possible to include, to provide for one private off-street parking space in order to comply with the code, so we are requesting relief. There is no living space being proposed in the lower level. That is going to be limited to storage, mechanicals, that would be accessible to the entire building. The unit sizes are pretty generous for this particular neighborhood, 1927 square feet, roughly 1927 square feet. And I apologize, I do see some livable space, but no bedroom being proposed in the lower level, storage being...
You probably saw me squinting at the plans because it does look as though it is, as if it's connected to the first-floor unit.
I apologize. Yeah, that's not intended to be bedroom space, it's simply a pertinent for the first level, and it would be a family room size area. Units 2 and Unit 3 are about 13 inches square feet each, and these would all be three-bedroom units. So with respect, I'm sorry, I do a rendering, I just wanted to show the rendering context as well as to what the change is for.
It looks good. So what's the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement? I know that's not what you're in for, but it's there before our eyes.
Yeah, 7 feet 6 is my note here. I don't know if the architect is on it, confirm that 7'6" was the height.
And tell us about the roof deck. I'm sorry, I might have missed that.
Roof deck is exclusive to upper level only, accessed by hatch, no hiddams.
Hatch, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. It is called out as a bonus room in the lower level. The height of the ceiling is 7'7 3/4", as called out in the plans for that bit of occupiable space. Doesn't appear to be a bathroom, remaining shown down there, so, and it is connected directly to Unit 1. No questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this project?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Lina Tramelli with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on the record in support of this proposal. During the community process, the applicant addressed the concerns of the abutters, and this proposal received support from Eagle Hill Civic Association. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Bonetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. The council would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Is anybody here to speak in opposition? Sorry, in support or opposition, go ahead.
I have no raised hands.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Ambassador. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve of BPA design order.
I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 119-3863, 683 Columbia Road. This is a constructed new rear addition to a single-family home at 683 Columbia Road and attached an existing rear barn. The new building would change to use from lodging house to seven residential units. Violation is Article 65, Section 8, a multifamily use is forbidden. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Article 65, Section 9, the side yard is insufficient. Article 65, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 65, Section 9.2, the location of the main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is James Christopher. RCALC with the business address of 1156 Dorchester Ave with the project architects. This is a multi-phase project, the first being renovation of an existing six-unit building, and then the second being the renovation in addition to the existing farmhouse and barn to construct seven total units. The six-unit dwelling is already permitted and under construction. That was just a renovation. This is to change the occupancy. So the proposal will be to construct a small addition only on the lower level to construct, to attach the farmhouse to the barn, and will house one unit in there. And then using the existing footprint of the building and adding some shed dormers to the barn, we're able to increase the unit count to seven units. We met extensively with...
So hold on, Mr. Christopher, I think there's something I'm not understanding. So the address for both buildings, the 683 Columbia Road?
No, Madam Chair, it's, the address for the farmhouse and the barn, yes, is on 683. The abutting six-year dwelling is only mentioned as its relationship to the property and the construction has happened to date.
Okay, Mr. Ambassador, can you back up a little bit to the site plan so we can understand what's happening? So the permitted project already has how many units in it?
Six.
Six.
And so you're proposing an additional seven units in the, quote, barn?
Yes.
Okay, and tell us how, the bedroom numbers and the unit sizes?
Sure. Unit 1 is a 1,040 square foot bi-level two-bedroom unit. Unit 2 is a 1,084 three-bedroom flat. Unit 3 is a 500 square foot one-bedroom. That's the unit that's in the attachment between the barn and the farmhouse. Unit 4 is a three-bedroom, 1,060 square foot flat. Unit 5 is a 1,000 square foot two-bedroom. It's 1,012 square feet, sorry. And Unit 6 is a 1,055 square foot three-bed. And then Unit 7 is in the eaves of the existing farmhouse, and that is a 1,153 square foot two-bedroom unit.
Okay, so, are these in joint ownership or are they separate ownership?
The owner is here. I'm not sure exactly how the ownership, but the farmhouse and the barn is one owner.
And so you're requesting off-street parking relief? Tell us about that.
So there is a shared driveway currently. Initially during the earlier phase of the project, there is an existing garage at the rear of the property, which houses eight spaces that we had proposed to take down and increase the parking as we worked with the abutters on Sumner Terrace and Dorchester North Civic Group in Columbia Savin Hill. It was more important to them to keep the garage as a visual barrier between the properties, and there's a gray change that happens there. So we opted to go with the 13 parking spaces, six of which would be assigned to the abutting property, and the seven will be assigned to 683 Columbia Road.
Okay, can I, who is the owner of this property?
His name is Manny Perez.
Is he on? I could speak to ownership.
He was supposed to be joining us, Madam Chair. Let me see if I can text him.
Can I just ask a question while?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just trying to get a clear visual of all this. So the property we're speaking of is, I'm looking at Google Maps, it's like a reddish-brown building.
It's brown, correct, yes, the brown farmhouse.
Okay, so it starts there and goes into the, okay. So this is like a building behind a building type of situation? This is, okay, right, that's all I had.
So I think, did you do the previous project, Mr. Christopher?
Yes, the previous project, Madam Chair, was simply a renovation. There's no change occupancy or footprint or anything like that. It was simply to renovate the existing building.
Okay, because I was going to go into the affordable piece about asking why didn't come in together, but that explains it. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. I think the proponent described that it's complicated for certain, but, you know, connecting the two into basically a single structure, I think, is actually a pretty nice way to address the issue. No questions on that.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Christopher, can you talk again about the shared driveway and the ownership and how that's deeded? Because it actually looks like the entrance to the building is off of the driveway, not off the sidewalk.
That is part of the variance that we're requesting, Mr. Ehrlich. It is a shared driveway, and the existing entrance to the farmhouse addresses the driveway. As we met with Dorchester North and the abutters, and to the owner's credit, he really wanted to maintain the character and shape of the existing building, which is why we opted to keep the side door the way that it is as the primary entrance, and then continue that design aesthetic down the property. So that is a relief that we're seeking.
So, no, I understand that. So again, this goes back to the Chair's question. What is the, what is the ownership? What happens if there's separate ownership? Is the shared driveway in the deed?
We can certainly make sure that that driveway is, that an easement is issued to create a cross-easement in perpetuity to that, Mr. Ehrlich, if that would be the reason.
I would think you would have to, otherwise you'd have the strangulation of not being able to enter your own building.
Agreed.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? I did have a question about height. So your relief is in stories and not in floors? I mean, in floors and not in feet?
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And the violation would be because we will be using more than 50% of the third floor of the farmhouse for that one unit.
And on the rehab, did they come in with no parking? How many parking spaces did they come in with?
We just maintained the spaces that were in the rehab, Madam Chair.
I just want to make sure that through the, so that you got the rehab done through, as of right, did you?
That's correct.
Okay, so now, if you're having the number of parking spaces... Okay, so now, if you're, um, having the number of parking spaces, then, uh, through this, through this appeal, then it means that it triggers, um, relief for the other project that was done as of right. Is that true?
Um, you know, I, I'd have to look into it, Madam Chair. We weren't cited for it, so I wasn't anticipating it.
Mm-hmm. Okay, okay. Um, is there anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Schwinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held an abutters meeting for the applicant on June 3rd of this year. The applicant mentioned that they would have screening and buffering in the rear, and they received support from the abutters and the local civic associations. So at this time, our office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McEckern, City Council, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, I have one raised hand. Margaret, you've been unmuted. Go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Margaret Foley, 11 Sumner Terrace. Um, I'm, 11, Sumner Terrace is a dead-end street. And we had the meeting with James with the abutters on Sumner Terrace Conrad Street and some on Sumner Street. We had two or three meetings with him. And our main concern, as he said, was the garage, because it is such a, a large, uh, building that separates the property. And agreed with, with the abutters to maintain that garage and use that instead of tearing it down. The other concern we had was that the end of Sumner Terrace, uh, it's, the, the grade of the property is different. There's a fence up there now with a chain-link fence and a wooden fence in back of it that's in total disrepair. And, um, James and the owner agreed to take that down, um, and put up a wall with a, a, another little fence on top of it to, to maintain the separation of the properties and for security and for aesthetics and everything. So we worked very hard on that. The abutters' main concern was the garage and the wall, which James and the owner agreed to maintain and, and all that. So I'd support the project too.
Okay, and you're happy with the solution to the parking?
Yes, because it, it, the properties are separated, so the parking, you know, there's no access to the terrace from that property, so they wouldn't be able to come home, come over to. There's five houses on the dead-end street, and there's probably 10 cars, so this terrace is already filled to capacity for parking. Our concern was that there may be no passageway so that, um, future residents would be able to park on our street. So that's why we wanted the, the wall with a fence similar to the one at KFC on top of it, which James worked with the owner and the abutters and was able to, you know, fulfill that request for the abutters. So that's, that was our main concern, was the garage and the wall.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have no other raised hands.
Given that information, um, let's see, um, Mr. Fortune, did, uh, BTD, uh, pipe in on this one?
No, they did not, Madam Chair.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Can I, I'll make a motion to approve with, with a couple provisos. BPDA design review. The recording of an easement for the shared driveway. And then copy sent to, for the record. And particular attention to the, to the rear of the property. To address the abutters' concerns with fencing and the garage and things like that. If that can be looked at in design review.
Is there a sec? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, may I have a note in this? Should the companion case come up, uh, the one, um, that was done as of right, uh, just a note about the double, the double counting of the parking if possible? Okay, motion carries. So you're all set. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Following the next two cases, calling BOA 110-1366-75 Willow Court. There is a companion case, BOA 110-1368-78 Willow Court. This is for 75. This is a rect. 6 multifamily building with 86 residential units, eight parking spaces, and racks for 104 bicycles, balconies on all levels, and roof deck. The violation is Article 65, Section 15, a multifamily dwelling use is conditional. Article 65, Section 16, dimensional regulations. Article 65, Section 16, dimensional regulations. This is for 78 Willow Court. This is the rect. 6-story mixed-use building with 99 residential units, 38 parking spaces, racks for 120 bicycles, balconies and roof decks on each level. The violation is Article 65, Section 15, a multifamily dwelling use is conditional. Article 65, Section 16, the floor-toe ratio is excessive. Article 65, Section 16, the building height is excessive. And Article 65, Section 16, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Madam Chair and board members, I'm sorry, the, um, on the first case, I saw that the same violations are both 75 and 78. Thank you. Name and address for the records, please.
Um, sorry, I, I just want to confirm that 78 also, does it have a trade, trade use? A, a use, a use change?
There is nothing.
Pardon? Okay, uh, please put your name and address on the record.
Okay, um, can you hear me, Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
All right, thank you, um, Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Joe Hanley, McDermott, Coltia Miller, 28 State Street in Boston, representing, uh, the ownership and proposed developer, Adam Sarbaugh, who is with us from Willow Baker LLC. Also with us is Niti John from Pavilic Chulinski Architects, who I'd like to ask to go through a very quick presentation of this exciting residential transformation development of 1.3 acres behind South Bay in the Community Commercial District. This is a Article 80 large project that was approved by the BPDA Board back on September 13th, uh, and will provide a mix of both residential homeownership condominiums and a level of affordability in excess of the IDP. Uh, also investments in new sidewalks.
Sorry, is, is, is a PDA not allowed in this area?
A PDA, uh, is allowed, but these are 13, uh, different parcels that are, uh, separated by, um, both private and public ways. And, uh, we are in substantial compliance with the PDA. Um, and we can go through that on the zoning as well. The PDA would allow a height of 65 and an FAR of 3. But as was noted, these are three separate but related developments, each on their own parcels. And that's necessary as to how they were, uh, assembled over, over a decade. There are 13 lots that are combined and separated. So a little bit of a technical answer, but because of that, we're proceeding, uh, through the zoning process, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Can I ask Niti John to take you through the presentation real quick?
Quickly, could I ask, Mr. Hanley, uh, just, uh, on paper, you have it as erecting seven stories, 118 residential units, et cetera. Both, both say seven stories and are different than the BPDA approved. So I just want to make sure we're, we're, we're working with you.
Member Dunn, what happened was, this has been a two-year process. We started with, um, taller buildings. These are two mid-rise 69-foot buildings. And that has been re-reviewed by ISD for the board relief today. Uh, it was also subject to a supplemental filing as approved by the BPDA on September 13th. And that's for the 69.
Does Mr. Robinson have the most updated plans?
We provided them a week in advance as required and got receipt that they were, uh, acknowledged.
Board members, it was read into the record as a six-story, not seven. Yeah.
Thank you.
Hold on, um, Mr. Robinson? Uh, do you have a plan that shows six stories?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Yes, go ahead.
Incorrect in the, in the, in the sort of description, but it is correct in the drawings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, we'll, I'll go through this very quick presentation. The slide here shows you the three buildings. Uh, we're here to talk about the ones that are highlighted as B1 and B2. I will ignore B3 until our December 7th presentation that was deferred earlier. Uh, B1, or 78 Willow, is a 99-unit condo building and is six stories. And B2 is an 86-unit rental building. Again, six stories.
So, so, okay, so this is now six stories. So 78 Willow Court, Court, sorry, is six stories and 99 units?
That is correct. 99 condos, yes.
Okay. Thank you, go ahead. And still 40, and still 40, uh, parking spaces?
38, ma'am.
38, um, 38, sorry, I'm doing my math here. And still, um, 125 bikes?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
And 75 Willow has 86 rental units. And we do have, and in, and this, the, the important part about this street that Joe was highlighting is, we have basically, if you can see, there's a red line around building B1, you'll see the property line. And this is where we worked with the BPDA, with the BTD, and with accessibility, um, all in the last year to make sure we, the streets today are narrow. The earlier presentation, the earlier slides had existing photos. There are no trees in this area. There are sidewalks that are three feet. It is an inaccessible area. And, uh, it has 11, uh, overhead utility poles. So these are the important things that we are trying to address. These three buildings are very powerful in their location. They can actually make better streets and better streetscape for the entire neighborhood. So I would say that, to me, is the highlight of what's being done. The street shifts, if you look at where B1 is.
Yes, please, I was going to ask you, please demonstrate how that happens, because there are a couple of us who are familiar with this area and its transition from its, um, its former uses to primarily residential. So please go ahead.
Absolutely. So, yeah, can I ask Mr. Ambassador for two seconds if he could go to the existing photos? If that would help the group, or would you just like to focus? So this is, these are the photos from Allstate. The top left is from Allstate Road that we see from the parking lot. The one on the right is Willow Court. That's the existing street that has three-foot sidewalk on the right and five-foot on the left now with a new development. Again, you'll see the conditions of the streets and the widths of the streets. And the bottom photos, all three of them, have three of the 11 utility poles that I'm talking about. And this is a typical condition in the area. On the, the bottom middle one, you'll see, it's got a utility pole right in the middle of the three-foot sidewalk. So these are conditions the team has been working towards, other than the building footprint. So we basically shifted Willow Court. And if we can go back, uh, Mr. Ambassador, to that plan that we were on earlier, we will be able to see how this...
It's Ms. Ambassador.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Ambassador. Uh, we have shifted the road entirely. So B1, um, you'll see where there's a row of trees. You see a red line? That's the property line. So you'll see how the entire road has shifted to the left, and we've given away portions of the property. Or you can see the string of four trees at the bottom near the B1 property line. So that's how we've shifted the road to the left. And what that helps us is we were able to add wider tree, uh, wider sidewalks and trees, not just on the B1 property, but on the two white boxes, our neighbors' property, we were able to improve sidewalks on both sides of the street. So that's what we did. And this was a process with the BTD and the BPDA.
And are the overhead lines going to be buried?
Yes, ma'am. They are all going to be buried.
Okay, and so this allows for, so Graham Court now becomes two ways?
No, ma'am, that will, uh, still be, I mean, yes, Graham Court is existing two-way, and that will stay the way it is. We are not changing Graham Court. Uh, Willow Court today is one-way. We are maintaining Willow Court the way it is.
Okay, and, um, let's just see. Can you talk through, um, the unit count and the size of the unit?
Absolutely. So, perfect question. Next slide, please, has the unit count, um, in detail in each of the buildings. We looked at the area, there were more three and four bedrooms, and this area needed two bedrooms, so we kind of focused. You'll see in the condo building, you'll see 40 studios, 31 one-beds, 27 two-beds.
Sorry, so this is the condo buildings, it's 54 and 508, okay, one bedrooms?
Mm-hmm.
67, 67.
67, one, 58 two-beds and 921 as an average square footage.
Okay, okay.
12, 12 three-beds, thousand.
Okay.
And, uh, this also lists shared amenities that we have between all three buildings that are shared amenities between, all residents can use it. So i- in this one, you can kind of see where there's a red star in front. We see the building entrances. Each building has its entrance from a different part of the street. And, uh, we have resident amenities, a, and so the next slide, actually, we'll show it a little better.
Can you tell us about the roof terrace at 78? Sorry.
The next, actually, what'll help is we also have renderings of this that might help. So this, this plan here will show you, and the following plan has a roof plan as well. So yes, we can go to this one. Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
So the roof plan shows, uh, various roof terraces on various floors. So then, the, the numbers in the square boxes are the floors. So level two, level six, and the roof plan, and level fives. These are different floors that have roof terraces as amenity spaces. In addition to the ground floor.
And, um, you know, in some areas of the city, there's always concern about noise, et cetera. What is going to be your strategy to ameliorate that?
In terms of, so we looked at the, uh, how the roofs are set back from the edge to make sure we have a five to 10-foot, um, setback from all the edges. In addition, we have green landscaping around areas that are closer to residential. And so we were very conscious of where we have those, as well as where we place the mechanical equipment in enclosures to make sure we meet the city's noise ordinances.
Thanks.
Also, to section and program them. So we worked with the abutters around us, and Adam and PCA talked about, um, having stanchions, planters, and sections that can be reserved so that it's not one large grouping, um, of folks that would, you know, cause noise, rather than having small pods, if you will, which is a curve in front.
What's the maximum number of people that can be on the roof?
Um, we, we, we have different, we have, uh, between 40 people to larger, uh, groups that we can have, so we have made sure that we always had two means of egress.
It mostly concerns about the noise. I mean, since there are... So since there are a large number of studios ones and ones, um, you know, there is, um, a concern about the, the, the density on that roof during the summer, but also the noise. And so, um, so can you talk to that?
Um, for all the reasons that I had said earlier, um, Madam Chair, we are looking at the, how they are located and how far back they are located from the roof, which is also a very critical part. So making sure they're all set back at least 10 feet using landscaping and planting and buffers, uh, will definitely help in that regard. And we, this could be a programmatic thing.
What I would suggest too, Madam Chair, is that we would have operational and programming regulations that, uh, the roof deck close not be available to folks, like, let's say, beyond, you know, 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night. Mr. Sarbaugh's going to retain, this is both a rental and condominium homeownership. He's also a part of the Neighborhood Association. And so we have been working very closely with them and the homeowners, who you'll hear from, in support. And so we would suggest that we would have operating requirements, hours of operation.
Ms. Hanley, thank you for, for helping point this. But you know, um, you've been to us often enough. We'd love to have these answers, uh, beforehand and commitments beforehand, so that we're not taken by surprise when, of course, since we are the last step, uh, neighbors who have concerns, put it always squarely on the Board of Appeal shoulders when there are issues. And so I just need to make sure that, you know, when, when we see a project, uh, we see it, uh, far more complete. So thank you. So can we go, um, um, Ms. Architect, to 75 Willow Court?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the plans are shared between the two projects, so, um, we, right now, we only have rendering. So, uh, the next three sheets are one for each, so this is building 175 Willow, where you kind of see, oh, sorry, there was, uh, balconies that Joe Hanley was talking about earlier.
Yes, so please go through the unit breakdown, because these are rentals and 75 is condos, right?
Uh, no, ma'am, 78 is condos and 75 is 86 rental.
Yes, sorry, I have my, I just spoke backwards, but my notes are correct, so go ahead.
Would you like me to go over the unit matrix for 75 Willow for the rental?
Please.
14, 14 studios. Fourteen, fourteen studios, thirty-six, it was actually on page five. Um, fourteen studios, thirty-four one-beds, twenty-eight two-beds, and ten three-beds.
And Madam Chair, we have a zoning slide too, if you wish.
Uh, Madam Chair, can I ask a question about the unit sizes? Um, your.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Your average size is, uh, you know, I mean, there's a, the city has the kind of, the mi- microunit, uh, thresholds are fifty, six twenty-five, and the eight fifty studio, one bedroom, two bedroom. And you're certainly fine with the average size, but when you look at ranges, you've got four forty, so you have some substandard, in the studio, you've got six oh seven, substandard, and, um, and eight thirty, so in each of the unit sizes, you have what would be considered microunits, uh, because they're below the city-defined threshold, was that intentional, or, I mean, why? I'm just curious, it's not that far, why didn't you just bump up the square footage so that you, you wouldn't be in violation of that particular issue?
Yeah, so, Mr. Ehrlich, can I answer, um, from the housing program, and you'll see in here, of the ninety-nine units, um, in building one, which are condominiums, um, twenty-five are IDP, so, um, we would have had a mix, we've also doing fifteen percent, so we're trying to do is focus on affordable homeownership. And then from a market rate standpoint, uh, we heard from people in the neighborhood that there would be a need for, um, you know, some more efficiently sized, a few efficiently sized condominium units for first-time homebuyers. Uh, and we think this, you know, site can support that, we're also surrounded by, um, four, uh, condominium associations who we work close with, all of which are, have really large units, so we're trying to create sort of a balance in that ecosystem.
Can, can I, can I add briefly?
I have an, I have an issue with the, uh, uh, substandard sizes being justified by affordability, I don't, uh, that.
Well, from a market rate standpoint, so price per square foot, for example, the first place I owned out of law school in the city was four hundred and twenty-five square feet, I probably couldn't afford it if it was five hundred and fifty. It's a, it's just a market rate, uh, price per square foot, so it gives people.
But, Mr. Hanley, regardless of your law school experience, the city has certain guidelines, and, and that's what we're trying to deal with. So if you lived in a substandard unit, you know, so, sorry for your experience, but, uh, that's below the guideline, so I, I just, I have a problem with the issue of, you know, if you want to talk about using the, the, uh, the microunit, uh, program, well, that's one thing, and we can make a decision based on that. But you've got some units, and I don't know how many, because they're not specified, that are below the threshold, each of the studio, uh, one and two bedrooms, that's my point. And I, and I don't think it's worth justifying it based on other buildings in the area being larger or on affordability.
Madam Chair, may I respond to Mr. Ehrlich, please?
Yes, please.
Um, Mr. Ehrlich, I absolutely agree with you, we are not, this project does not intend to be in the compact. We've actually made all efforts to make sure the units are good, largely sized. Um, the city standard is, I think, four hundred and fifty square feet, is what is, I think, what you're referring to from the BPDA, we've heard four twenty-five, four fifty. Um, can I confirm that we will make sure, this team will make sure we don't go? Even, there's a few units, I, I will be very honest with you, I was very fair and made sure the lowest number was clear and transparent here, but as this team develops the units further, we have plenty of room. We can make sure that we make, we don't have units that are substandard, that is not this team's intention.
Okay, that would be, that would make a difference in terms of how I view the project, thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, and, Mr. Ehrlich, please do remember that as a potential proviso, should we approve this. Now, there are also, um, and the other issue is the noise, which hasn't been dealt with. Um, and then, let's talk about the number of parking spaces. Cause it looks like you have, um, in the new math, fifty-seven parking spaces in units, um, in, in seventy-eight and seventy-five. A total of fifty-seven parking spaces and two hundred and forty-five bike racks. Um, can you, can you just talk to that discrepancy?
Uh, building one has a, has a parking garage in the basement. Uh, that's seventy-eight Willow, um, seventy-five Willow has only, uh, parking spaces at the back. Madam Chair, it is, uh, lower in its parking ratio, uh, compared to maybe other projects, but we were looking at the, um, the sizes and the, the area being very transit-oriented, and looking at a quick market study on maybe not needing as many cars, and looked at a lower ratio for this area, this area has good transportation access. And so looking at that, that was the reasoning, the team didn't want to have two, uh, parking garages in both.
Yeah, and this was, you know, as you know, Madam Chair, the, um, Article eighty, you know, administers the parking uh, requirements, so we went through a pretty extensive process, there was a supplemental filing as well. Worked very closely with, uh, BTD, uh, BPDA, Transportation Planning, and you'll see that in all the uh, new requirements with respect to bike parking. Um, also, this is an area that, um, if you look at, like, visitor parking, for example, there's a giant parking garage uh, that is free, we're not relying on that, so to speak. Uh, but it is, uh, less than a block from us at South Bay, it's very much an area that we thought could benefit, rather than spending money on parking, which may not be future-proofed, uh, that we could really benefit from that vast amount of open space, public realm, new green spaces, and new connectivity in this area.
Mr. Hanley, you know, this benefits your developer. Should that parking space, should that parking garage go for fee, then somebody who has two jobs, or off-schedule jobs, or, or other, you know, requirements is going to have an issue. Um, and so, you know, every project needs, in certain ways, to stand on its own, own weight. And, you know, there's a shifting of weight here to a developer who might have other plans down the road. Um, and, you know, every time we approve a project with something like this, you know, I always think about those people who might, I don't know, work at the airport when transit isn't running, or other places when transit isn't running, and do need to rely on some kind of vehicle. Um, and, and so, I, I think there, we need to acknowledge that not everybody is going to ride a bike, and not everybody is going to, um, work hours when transportation is easily accessible. And we should make sure that each developer can, doesn't, doesn't punt, and, and I'm sorry to use this word twice with this project, but doesn't punt to some, something else. Uh, you know, so I'll put that there, may I ask, Ms. Architect, um, if there has been thought to that?
Yes, ma'am, we have looked at building full parking garages, but we also have done a research, and we, I don't have that right in front of me right now. As to there, it, there's enough evidence of young professionals, and a lot of them who do not, cannot afford cars, I didn't afford a car when I lived in the city before. And so, we want to make sure this addresses a different population and different crowd, not everybody wants or owns cars, so we do have that as, um, information that we based it off of, but yes, to your point, we did look at adding cars in the very old iteration. Uh, as I pointed out, Baker Court, Willow Court, these streets are narrower, the neighborhood did not want more cars in this area in general, so we were also very respectful of existing streets, and, uh, neighborhood, uh, request to not add more cars.
And Madam Chair, if I can just add, you know, y- your point is well-taken, you know, we need to stand on our own merits. Uh, in this regard, it's sort of a double-edged sword, as we talked with Mr. Ehrlich about the size of units, we know that smaller units use less parking, we also know that renters use less parking. We do have a mix here, um, but what I will say is, uh, I know, Madam Chair, you have a background in planning. Uh, we're a little bit caught between a rock and a hard place, um, you're a city board, so is the BPDA. Uh, and, you know, we don't get to make the decision as to how much parking, uh, you know, we have, because under the zoning code, that's administered through the Article eighty process. Um, I don't disagree with you, and we've tried to do the best we can under the circumstances.
So how are you going to put an equity lens on it, so what if I'm working at the View Medical Center, and, um, you know, I get off work at three in the morning when, um, when the, um, transit is not running, and I'm in one of those IDP units? What is the equity lens that's going to be used to ensure that people who do need the parking, versus those who, you know, have their parking for whatever reason, um, they just have the parking, so what is the equity lens that this developer is going to use to ensure that people who need the space for their bread and butter, um, have priority on those spaces?
We can't hear you, Mr. Hanley.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We can't hear you, Mr. Hanley.
I'm, I'm sorry, the parking will be unbundled, it won't be assigned per unit. The parking facility will also, uh, include, uh, onsite exclusive vehicle share program uh, for renters, we've also created, uh, a dedicated Uber and Lyft, uh, drop-off, which trends show us that more people commute that way than by vehicle ownership. And so from an equity standpoint, this will save working-class folks and people trying to get into the working class uh, from having to spend two thousand dollars a month to own a vehicle that, uh, they use three or four times a week. That's our approach.
Okay, so that's, okay, so, okay, okay.
May I ask, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Um, you mentioned the availability of free parking at the nearby, uh, South Bay garage. So have you, have you had any conversations about, uh, you know, agreements around spaces, et cetera? I mean, I don't know how that, that parking garage works, is it twenty-four-hour access, is it certain hours? How does that work, cause right now, there is, there is a big empty lot, uh, where B two is, with lots of parkers there, so there is definitely, there are definitely users of that parking from the existing, from among the existing, uh, housing in the vicinity.
Yeah, so, so thanks for that question, one of the things that we did was to create, mostly what this is, is to provide support for South Bay as it's been revitalized, they've obviously gone through a major downturn through the pandemic, after putting a lot of money in there. Um, right now, this enclave that we're in does not connect to South Bay and those conveniences, you'd have to walk around the block. So if you look at our site plan down into the left, we're creating a new connection. And so we're not relying on that parking, what we're saying is, um, if you live here, you want to be able to shop, meet friends, uh, socialize uh, in and around what has been invested in for South Bay. And I can tell you that that parking garage is open twenty-four seven, and it rarely, I have been there dozens and dozens of times, rarely is there more than one tray of its several filled. Uh, there's also a giant vast parking area on the other side in front of, uh, the gas station, and what is now a vacant, um, supermarket. Um, so it's, it's more about, you know, trying to rebuild and stitch into a community, and then have these other opportunities for folks visiting the site, visiting residents, coming to shop, living there, uh, for short term, like, for example, you may say, gee, I gotta run home, grab a cup of coffee at Starbucks, get something in my unit, and then head back out. Um, so it's very much about keeping that in mind, and we, we work closely with Edens, um, in our communications, and you can kind of see this in how we're creating these new connections to support the economic opportunities there.
And has, have you thought, to pick up on Ms. Dong's question, about reserving or getting into a cooperation agreement with Edens to reserve X number of spaces for this development? Uh, because I can very easily see with all the development we are seeing in this area, all around uh, the South Bay Mall, um, you know, the demand and stresses on, on parking, we will see that, we will hear the same issues in the not-too-distance future that we're hearing in South Boston and beginning to hear in East Boston.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, so what I would suggest is, you're not the last stop, because we're an Article eighty project, yes, we've been approved, but we'll have a transportation access, uh, tap-up, uh, plan that's required in a cooperation agreement, I would suggest that we bring this up to the BPDA, their transportation planners reviewed our, our traffic study, and did not suggest that this was needed or asked for it, now again, uh, you know, we're doing the best we can, Madam Chair, I don't regulate the project, right? Uh, but what I can suggest is that we take that input, and we return to the BPDA with the transportation experts and planners on it.
Madam Chair, I have a few other questions, if I could. Or you could first.
No, 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 um, so I just want to just stop for one minute. Um, Mr. Robinson, I don't think we asked you if the plans were adequate?
No, you didn't, but the plans are, um, adequate.
Okay, um, and let me ask anybody else who asks questions. Um, please, um, let, after Ms. Dong is done, please jump on, uh, go ahead, Ms. Dong.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair, um, you mentioned, uh, that you were, uh, widening sidewalks as part of your, your efforts. Uh, are you also doing anything about the, the streets? Because as you note, as you noted, they are very narrow streets, and presently, whenever there is, like, a, you know, FedEx, uh, postal service, or Amazon, any type of delivery, what they're doing is jumping onto the sidewalks, uh, and basically blocking traffic, and once you block traffic at the, at that little corner of uh, your projects and the corner project, no one can access anything, uh, uh, through, you know, you just basically have to, have to wait. Uh, and I think, uh, you may have mentioned, but I just want to confirm, uh, the parallel, uh, where B three is. Did you indicate that you were creating a new street there, so that, uh, cars could actually go through?
Yes, ma'am, um, if I could go to page six of the presentation, it would answer all your questions, and thank you for actually talking about the drop-off, which I missed. So we'll go over it, um, in this street plan, you will notice that, actually, this is good, thank you. Um, so, top right, we'll start with there, where it says building three, that road today doesn't exist. The, the property is a dead-end street, so what we are doing is we are opening up that street to, uh, the driveway that is accessed to the garage, so that's the part that we're opening up. So that was one question, we have, uh, drop-off areas, and I'm not sure, if, if you see the words Willow Court, um, to the right of the words Willow Court, is we have added a step in, um, of eight, ten feet, and that is a lane to drop off, to address your question about FedExes and boxes. And, uh, so we've added that three-to-four-car lane to help people pull off on the side, so they are not blocking the street. In addition, Baker Court is a shared street, which means it's raised, so it's curbless as you enter Baker Court. And, uh, Willow Court for the portion in the middle, which is in between build, the words building two and seventy-one Willow, we have raised portions of the street to help build that seamless connection, we worked with the fire department to make sure the streets were wide enough for fire turning radiuses, and that's why you'll see certain areas of the street, um, don't have trees, we have, it left it as clear. Um, so it's a combination of shared streets, curbless zones, that help seamless traffic and create width to the street, in addition, um, you'll notice that the width of this street, the sidewalk, kind of changes, especially on building one, you'll see that the sidewalk's wider up top, and in the middle, it's the minimum, it's about seven feet at the tightest point, and it goes up to fifteen feet. Um, so yes, to answer your question, uh, we have widened the street uh, sidewalks to make sure they meet the city's guidelines, complete street guidelines. Um, added trees, raised areas, and created, um, curbless zones. Now, Baker Court is widened, I don't know if you can tell, the first part of Baker Court, um, that is just in front of building two, which is in our control, and we were able to widen the street. So where we could and where it was on our property, we gave up portions of the property, roughly about thirteen thousand square feet, and it's on one of the slides, is given up for street width and sidewalk.
So Ms. Dong, are we almost wrapped up?
Uh, yes, can I ask about the elevation, what's, what's your height, sixty-nine height feet, compared to your abutting properties, how, what's the contrast in height?
So overall, we have about sixty-five feet. So overall, we have about 65 feet is what I have. And the neighboring properties, we are surrounded by six-story buildings. So they are all between, in the 65 to 69 height range. The zoning, there's attachments to this document that has detailed elevations. I don't know if I can ask.
Not surrounded by six-story buildings, other than the Andy. Those are all small condo buildings that are like three to, three to five stories.
They're between, yes, they're predominantly four stories and five stories. So Seven Baker Court is five stories, 85 to 83, 83 to 85 Willow is five stories. Eight and 12 Baker are four stories. And that's the reason Building Three is also four stories to match the height.
And what I would say about that too is you'll hear from the homeowners associations who we work with. We've reduced the lot coverage significantly with, I think, three or four times the amount of open space that's required in order to set back in strategic ways from those existing structures, as you mentioned, Chair. And also, on the far side, which are butts, the Baker property, that's an existing building that is at the lot line. And we're creating a side guard for them by a permanent access and public space easement for them. So we're kind of hoping to, helping to cure some of the ills of some of the, you know, over emphasize or over-aggressive lot coverage. The other thing I would say is that parking garage we keep talking about, which is right next to us, is also taller than our buildings.
Thank you. I'll reserve any other questions later. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Real quick, do you have one of those, is that one of those pickup drop-offs on Enterprise Street as well?
No, Enterprise Street has a significantly good width, and it has parking in front of it, which we haven't shown. So we've maintained the wider width. Willow Court is what's challenging with.
Okay, so those are parking spots in front of?
Yes. They're existing to remain.
And Willow's sort of the main true street. So we're thinking that that drop-off doesn't just benefit our property, but also is utilized by our abutters and those HOAs that we just talked about.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, I would like to see you work with BPD and even put one in front of Enterprise Street too. Just maybe one spot, pickup drop-off. But I do like how you took that into consideration on a lot of places to get Uber's FedEx off the street, off the public way, and, and keep traffic moving. I'd, I'd also like to see maybe some signage or stuff directing people to, to Field Court, that little parking area there. You can use for some on-street pickup and drop-off, which I can think would help alleviate some of these concerns as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Hampton, you've been following this conversation about our concerns here?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I worry that under Article eighty, some of the nuances might be lost. And I'm counting on you helping us on that front.
No, I understood. We do have professionals in the transportation area here in the planning department. That, that is their job. I can't speak to, you know, their assessments, but, you know, the, the project has gone through a thorough review. And the recommendations that our transportation planners have made is, you know, the best for this project.
Okay. Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Twinn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. For the last few years, the applicant has worked through multiple iterations while responding to community feedback. And on the condition that the app can mitigate any negative changes to transit and, and street scape through strong parking and street infrastructure, our office would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jill McEckren, City Councilor Frank Baker's office would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan for City Council of L.A., Michael Flaherty, council to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Pierce Martin from Senator Nick Collins' office. We would like to also go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have letters of support, but we also have two letters of opposition. But I don't know if the opposition was on the other Willow Court. Had to read it.
Oh, I see, okay. And what, did, did they identify what their issues, what their concerns might be?
Uh, parking.
Okay, okay. So any, any other, anybody else, Ms. Ambassador?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have five raised hands.
Okay.
Start with. Hi, Ben. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ben Murphy with the New Market Business Association. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. We would like to go on record speaking in support of this project. Our executive director was on the Impact Advisory Group, and the owners have been very responsive to the needs of the community. While New Market is generally opposed to residential in most cases, this is an, an area near a retail project where we believe that it fits and would be a benefit to the area. So we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Caller thirteen, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Minna Perez, representing the Carpenters Union. On behalf of hundreds of our Boston residents who want to go on record in support and cheer up the developer for a great community outreach, and thanks to our elected officials in South Boston. Thank you.
Sarah, you've been unmuted. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please. Leif Mitchell, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Leif Mitchell. I'm at Eight Baker Court, number four. I'm also a member of the Impact Advisory Group. We've worked very closely with the Willow Court LLC and particularly Adam Starbo and Joseph Hanley on this project over several years. We're very excited about the opportunities that this will bring to the neighborhood. We've lived in this neighborhood for the past five years, going through the major transitions that the neighborhood is, is having. We have no concern about the roof decks and any, any noise. We're very happy about the height and scale of the project. We think that the opening up and having the turnaround for Uber and delivery for the neighborhood is going to make a huge difference, providing some green space in the neighborhood, making it a real opportunity for a community to come together. So I am in full support of this project. And I know that there are probably others on from our building as well. Our condo association has spent a lot of time discussing this, along with the other members of the condo associations on Baker Court. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask every new member, every new person to give testimony either in support or in opposition? To give us new information so that we are making the best use of the time here? Okay, so new information only. Put your name and address on the record first.
Madam Ambassador, I have three more raised hands. William, you've been unmuted. If you want to, go ahead and state your name and address, sorry, for the record.
Hi, thank you. My name's William Lawson. I live at Eight Baker Court as well. And so I, I do echo everything that Leif said, but a couple other points that I wanted to make regarding the parking. As someone who has lived in this building for five years, I don't have a car. I rely solely on, on public transportation and Uber, et cetera, to get to and from work and, and just my daily life. And so I will say that it's very possible, very easy, you know.
No, that's just my list, Jeannie, that's not.
Thank you. May I hear from somebody else?
Your name's gone, Jeannie. Sixty.
Ms. Ambassador, may I hear from somebody else?
Yes.
Wow.
Sorry. Brian, you've been unmuted. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Brian Boe, at Seven Baker Court, Unit Seven. In the interest of calling out new issues, we, I'm very much in support of this project. The two issues that I was concerned with that were very adequately addressed by the developer were traffic concerns and green space concerns. I won't go into detail, I'm happy to answer any questions, but in the interest of being brief, we had concerns, they were addressed in a very positive way by the developers. So I'm very much in support of the project.
Thank you.
We have one more, Ms. Ambassador. Mike, you've been unmuted. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. It's, it's Mike Fleming and Rachel Taze from Seven Baker Court, Unit Eight. One of the trustees is Baker Courts. On behalf of the building, we are in support of this project. As everyone said many times, the, the transparency's been phenomenal. I would just would like to two other points, new points.
Hold on. Anybody who's spoken, can you please put down your hand so that we know who else to call on? That's really important for us. Go ahead, Mr. Fleming.
The other, the other, just the new points coming in, just as far as the noise. I would also just ask you all to maybe consider the, the positive impacts of the noise. Right now, the way that Mass Ave is designed, it is very noisy coming in. And these buildings will actually up the air buffers to the neighborhood. We get a lot of noise, reciprocation from Mass Ave, the Eden's Garage, and Eden's Development. And so there's a lot of positives that are there that this building will also add to reducing noise. I think the parking piece, I'm newer to the neighborhood, seen the parking lot grow quite a bit. That was referred to, the dirt lot, which is where the building's going to go. That is not as a direct result of any new ownership or buildings. It's really the, what I've seen is people realizing that they can save 300 bucks a month versus parking in the Andy Lot. So why not park a block away? I think the other piece too is, you know, pushing this project forward, there's a, a piece of safety here. As everyone knows, the mass cast population keeps continuing to move down our way. Even the other night, we had someone jump our fence because it's a dark, desolate area. So the more that there's a delay, I think, in moving this project forward, that neighborhood remains in kind of an unsafe, desolate, dark area that's off the grid. So it's very helpful, I think, to kind of move it in a direction that the buildings move forward and have some, get some activity and some growth there.
It's going to be good for the community.
That, that's so, such an interesting take. Ben, are you still on? Okay, so given all that information, can everybody who's spoken lower their hand, Ms. Ambassador? Anybody else on the phone or anyplace else?
No other raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to, for approval with two provisos. One is BPDA design review, and the other has to do with minimum unit size. That, that there be no studio less than 450 square feet, no one-bedroom less than 625 square feet, and no two-bedroom less than 850 square feet.
May I add provisos around the noise? Attorney Hanley mentioned hours of operation for that roof deck. If that could be something in a proviso about that.
Okay, she has.
What is the roof deck time you're proposing? 10 o'clock was that, what Mr. Hanley proposed? 10:00 P.M. and the, in all year round?
Yeah, 10, 10:00 P.M., 11:00 on the weekends.
I'm fine with that.
So the, so the, it's design review, the unit size, the roof deck, hours of operations, anything else?
I think the conversation with the parking garage might be useful, given how many units and how few parking on-site.
Okay. And we will leave that also as, as a to-do for Article eighty. Is there a second?
Second, Joe.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set for that proviso. Those are the questions.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, it's now 11:13. I'm going to call the 11 o'clock hearings. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for 11 o'clock cases? Give me the address first. Hi, Madam Chair, I guess there was anything. You want to, you want to take a few minutes or you want to continue?
No, 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 let's, let's steam ahead.
Okay. Calling the next case, calling BOA 124-2756, 23 East Conchet Street. This is to construct two new bracket-supported balconies projecting six feet on the rear of the building at third, at third and fourth floors. Violation Article 64, Section 9.4, townhouse/rowhouse extensions, third and fourth floor rear balconies. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Timothy Burke with a business address of 142 Berkeley Street in Boston.
And so these are bracket-supported, six feet, so they meet all the requirements. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans look good, no questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Cruz Jolie from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The mayor's office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we do have one letter from the Worcester Square in support.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, are we clear? May I have a motion, please?
Make a move. Second, Joe.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 124-5167, 89 Monroe Street. This is the legalization, legalization of a living space extension into the attic of a three-family. Violation Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small, have a business address of 1 Dobson Road, County Mass. Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief to extend living space into the attic area of a three-family dwelling. Zoning sub-district is a 3F 4,000, we have 1,000 square feet. Only violation is the FAR. Wide FAR is 0.8, and we are proposing 1.3.
Okay, and can you tell us what the flow to ceiling height is in that attic?
Yep, seven, seven foot nine inches.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans look, uh, look good, no, no questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Who, can you hear me?
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can. Go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Jason Gitt, from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. They have, they have completed a full community process and have gotten the support of the Garrison Charter Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ambassador, any more, any more people ready to participate in this project? Tom, do we have a, a, a technical issue with Ms. Ambassador?
I don't think so, Madam Chair. Looks like she's still on the hearing.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Sarah, a sec. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 124-6894, 135 Dudley Street. There's a companion case, BOA 124-6900, 145 Dudley Street. This is for 135. This is to construct a six-story building consisting of six residential, sixty residential units with ground-level commercial. Phase two of 135-145 Project Mass Ave Plan with 140 existing phase-one lower-level parking spaces. The violation is Article 50, Section 11, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 11, the building height is excessive. Article 50, Section 11, rear yard is insufficient. This is for 145 Dudley. This is to construct a 10-story building, consists of 110 residential units, 152,823 square feet, with 140 space parking garage. Violation is the same as the previous. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Timothy Fraser and Denzel McKenzie for McKenzie and Associates, a business address 183 State Street in Boston. Also on the call is Daniel Cruz and Armin McCoy, as well as John B. Cruz III of the Cruz Development Company, and then Anthony Viverido, a project architect from the architectural team.
So please go ahead with the press. So please go ahead with the presentation.
Great, so, Madam Chair, we're here today seeking relief for a mixed-use residential commercial project, it's in Nubian Square, this project was actually designed in response to a 2018 RFP from the Department of Neighborhood Development, it's adjacent to the B2 Police Station and the Roxbury Municipal Court, as well as the Dudley Literary Center. In the project, as Mrs. Secretary called out, it comprises two phases of 135 and 145 Dudley Street Project Master Plan, and so both of these companion variances are as the Secretary read, we have, in response to the DNB's RFP, been selected as the designated developer in 2019, and violations are generally triggered because of the specifics of the RFP, the plan specifically calls for amassing, they wanna create, the city's trying to create in this area, flow of continuous parcels and kind of make this Nubian Square a destination area.
Mr. Fraser, for one minute, Miss Ambassador, can you scroll through so we can see a rendering of this proposal, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Fraser.
So as part of that community process, in the RFP process, I guess there was two portions, we held several community meetings, obviously with the Director Butters, the Boston Public Library, the Boys and Girls Club in the courthouse, as well as with the Police Department and the Boston School Department, we also went through meetings with the IAG.
So sorry, Mr. Fraser, you know, we'll get all that from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, can you speak to the, the meat of the project? So, in total, how many units are there, can you give, give us the breakdown of the uni, the unit square footage, the number of bedrooms and the unit square footage, talk through the parking, and talk to affordability, if any?
Great, why don't I pass it over to Anthony Viverito, who can give you the specifics on the unit sizes and measurements for both of the two phases, the ten-story phase and the other phase, which is six stories, five stories with parking underneath, Anthony?
Miss Ambassador, is Anthony being, what is Anthony's last name?
Viverito.
Is he?
Yes, I just put him on.
Okay, so go ahead, Anthony, please put your name and address on the record, and please to talk to the details of the proposal.
Set of drawings in front of you, but I also have a presentation that might, that's a little bit more graphically oriented, would I be able to show my screen?
No, Mr. Viverito, the only thing we can do is go through the drawings that were submitted with the appeal, but you can give us a higher level review so that we know that there are, from what I can tell, 170 residential units being proposed, tell us, you know, you've heard the other presentation, the breakdown, and those kind of details that we cannot get very quickly from looking at a floor layout like we have in front of us.
Okay, if I can have, if I can have you all go to the first page of this PDF, there's a, this is the, an axonometric of the, of the two buildings, the building in the foreground is a five-story rental building, and the building in the background, behind it there is a ten-story condominium, the next slide, please.
Now, so, so while we are on this, can you talk through what happens in the rental building and the condo, what's the breakdown on the bedroom count and the size of the bedroom?
Yes, the next slide actually has all of that data.
Okay, let's go.
Yep, so the, the breakdown of the units is, yeah, if you're able to zoom in on that.
Why don't you put it verbally on the record, please?
Sure. So we have a total of 170 units, the condominium count is 110, we have one bedroom, I'm sorry, for one-bedroom condo, we have 22, for two-bedroom condo, we have 79, for three-bedroom condo, we have two, and for three-bedroom condo townhouse design, we have four, for a grand total of 110, and for the rental building, we have...
So hold on, tell us about the average one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom unit size.
Okay, so the, the, the unit square footage for the one-bedroom condo is in the 772 square foot to 727 square feet, so 727 to 772 square feet for the one-bedrooms. For the two-bedroom condos, we have a range, again, of about 1,000 square feet to about 1,100 square feet, I'm sort of aggregating the different ones here, and then the three-bedroom condo, we have at roughly 1,500 square feet, and the three-bedroom townhouse, we have as 750 square feet approximately.
Okay, and as I recall, the RFP, so why don't we go to the rentals and, and do the same, the same walkthrough?
Okay, the one-bedroom, we have 24 units, two-bedroom, we have 31, and three-bedroom, we have five, for a grand total of 60. And the square footage for the one-bedrooms range from 610 square feet on the, on the low end to 650 square feet. On the two-bedroom, we range in square footage from 900 to about, our largest two-bedroom is almost 1,000 square feet. And the, the two-bedroom, I think I already covered that, did I say the two-bedroom was 900 to roughly 1,000, so...
How about the three-bedroom?
The three-bedroom, we have, yes, so apologize, the three-bedroom here is about 1,100 square feet.
Okay, and then your parking, how many parking spaces altogether, I'm assuming there's shared parking, but maybe that's a false assumption?
There, there are 140 parking spaces in total, and they are, 49 of them are compact and 91 of them are standard spaces, they are designated, we have one-for-one spaces provided for the condominium and the balance of the spaces between the rental and common spaces for city parking as well.
And tell us about city parking, what does city parking mean?
We have, through the design process, we were asked to provide parking for the public, and we've designated a certain number of parking spaces for public use, they are not specifically for the residents of the development.
So isn't shared parking, in other words, during the day, workers can use the parking and at night residents also use that same space?
I, I believe that is the intent, but I'd like to have our client, Dan Cruz, speak to that, and speak to the operations component of that.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, the, the parking will actually be assigned, the condominium owners will have an assigned parking, and the rental building will have a section that's assigned, there'll be 17 to 18 and 19 public spaces that'll be segregated from, from the rental and the condo building, from rental and of...
So, so it, it won't be used possibly at night by residents, should they need it, okay, and, and are you proposing bicycle spaces in here?
Yes, there, there is one-to-one bicycle parking, plus there'll be about 9,500 square feet of commercial retail, and there's parking, there's bike parking assigned for, for that area as well.
So there's 9,500 square feet for retail, and is there any office, or is retail, is it retail slash office?
Yes, retail slash commercial, it's all first floor.
Okay, then let me ask, are you proposing any roof decks?
There, there will be a roof deck, this building will also, in the condo building, this building will have a concierge service 24/7, plus there'll be a parking attendant on duty 24 hours a day, so they're, they're gonna typically be our eyes and ears, we'll have a cutoff time for the roof deck, but we'll have personnel on site, so if there's any issues...
So are there, are there roof decks on both buildings, or just the condo building?
Just the condo building.
Okay, and then is there any artist-led workspace or anything like that in this building?
There, there is not in these buildings, there is a level of affordability, it's roughly 50%, you have 87 of the, of the 170 units, so it's a little better than 50% are affordable, it ranges from 30%, 50% to 80% to 100% of median income.
So if, if 50% are affordable, affordable means the other 50% are market?
Correct.
Oh, that's good, 'cause I thought the RFP, I have to admit that I was at the meeting where every developer gave their presentation, so that's actually good, so I think I covered, did I cover everything, open space is covered by the roof deck, okay, I need to ask you about the height, the 10 feet, what does that do on shadows, either to the library or to the court, to the courthouse?
Well, you know, as part of the Article 80 process, you have a shadow study done.
Okay, may, sorry, Mr. Cruz, may I have the architect respond to that?
Yeah, so we had a shadow study done, Dan, you'll have to...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Augment the, the results of that in terms of the specific question here.
And, and, you know, I'm not a shadow study expert, but basically, the study was considered to be acceptable for what was being proposed, there was no pushback, there was no issue with the BPDA Article 80 review, and as you know, that's a fairly lengthy and involved process.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are, are, are good, no, no questions, I think, on answer, your questions were good, and I think in line with the proposal, so, no questions.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I, just for the architect, I was a little confused about the presentation of the unit sizes, I just kind of got lost in the shuffle, so let me just ask a couple simple questions, are there any single bedrooms, either rental or condo, that are below 450 square feet, and are there any two-bedrooms, either rental or condo, that are below 625 square feet?
There are no, start with the first one, the question was, are there, on the rental side, are there two bedrooms, rental and condo?
Either rental or condo, the whole, the whole project?
Less than 625 square feet.
400, and 400 and, right, for the one bedrooms?
450 for one bedroom, 625 for two bedroom.
I don't, no, there aren't.
No, there aren't, okay?
There's the answer, no.
Okay, thank you, okay, and any other questions from the board? Can I ask about the design and how it respects the, the wonderful work that's gone in to the bowling building and, you know, some of the, the key features in Nubian Square? Do you have a rendering of what this might look like when it's completed?
We do, it's, it's on, it's on my desktop, unfortunately, we'd have to look at the, at the first page of this presentation in the, in the, in black and white here, unless I can share my screen.
Okay, I suppose that's not going to be possible, so we will have to just move on, okay, and we are, some of, some of the open space is also being provided through a plaza, is that, is that true?
That's correct, there are a series of plazas at the, along Dudley Street that we're creating in front of the building to activate the streetscape, I would use, this is actually a mid-level plaza that connects the two buildings, but why don't we go to the third, should do the third?
Can you please give Miss Ambassador the page number?
Miss Ambassador, can we, let's see here, A101, would be the second? Yeah, so these are, these are strictly the, this is the lowest level, but you don't have the landscaping plan here to reference, so it's difficult for me to, to put into words what's going on from a site plan standpoint, but there's, suffice it to say, along Dudley Street, there are a series of public connections that we're making at the plaza, at the ground level, there's a cafe on the left side of the plan here, that has outdoor seating, that ties into a larger public plaza, landscape plaza, and then directly in front of the condominium entrance, there's also a very nice plaza plan that will extend the library's front outdoor space as well. The next, there, if you go to the next slide, I can show you the...
Yeah?
As you go, as you work your way up, another level, next slide, please. You can see that, that hatched area is actually a dedicated plaza for the residents, both the rental and the condominium, and that's, that's actually over the, extends over the top of the parking garage below.
Thank you, does any of the other board members have any questions?
Yeah, I, I just, what, what was the thought process that went in, went into the parking, it, it just seems like a lot of parking, the areas that we're trying to cut to reduce traffic and get people on public transit and activate the streetscape, we're using the whole first level on a building for a parking garage.
Is that first level or below grade parking?
It's a combination of one level at grade and one level below, and, and that was dictated by the soils on the site, so, Dan, I don't, I don't know if you want to talk to the...
I can't.
How we ended on that, but...
And, and Commissioner, as you know, this, these types of projects have long community review processes, and we actually started out with 270 parking spaces, because one of the things we're trying to do is, you know, restart Nubian Square, because businesses are closing down, and so when you talk to owners there, in the shops, they'll tell you that they don't get people there because there's no parking, and so part of our proposal was to address that issue, because if you go through Dudley, to Washington Street, it's more of a pass-through area than a destination, these proposals from the city are trying to now make it a destination, bringing foot travel... These proposals from the city are trying to now make it a destination, bring in foot traffic. Uh, support the businesses, so we started out with two hundred and seventy car spaces to do that very thing, if if you know. The Boston School Department parks a hundred and thirty cars in in Nubian Square alone. And so that takes up a lot of the spaces that the merchants would otherwise want their shoppers to utilize. So we set the two seventy, there was a lot of conversation about traffic and the flow, and we settled on one forty. Which the community was actually pushing for more, they were actually pushing for more, but because of the soils conditions, we couldn't do it. Um, because again, uh, you know, Nubian Square is not like a lot, a lot of other neighborhoods in the city, it just doesn't have. Commercial and retail, you know, uh, a a lot of traffic, it just doesn't. A- after seven o'clock, it's like a ghost town, it shuts down. And these projects, of which ours is one, was meant to try and revitalize that and support the businesses. And the businesses are crying for parking, so.
And and just, and just to echo Mister Cruz, my organization did a market analysis of Nubian Square. In conversations, uh, focus groups with residents and businesses, there was, um. There is a demand for parking spaces, um, and um also for other kinds of activities. Um, so Mister, um, Mister Cruz, you're absolutely on point. Um, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition um to this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Jason Gant from the Mayor's Office in Neighborhood Services, I'd like to go on record in support of this project. They've had an extensive community process, primarily with their most recent two meetings on June third and June twenty-ninth. And which they did gather lots of community support and feedback, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support, we also have one letter. Of opposition, but it looks like it's from the local businesses, owner and operators, and I believe they're on.
Okay. May uh, may we just, um, okay, um, Miss Ambassador, anybody else?
Yes, I have one raised hand. James, you've been unmuted, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is James Clark, and I work for the Arthur J. Early Company located at twenty-five hundred Washington Street in Roxbury.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair and the board for hearing us today. We're writing today as both concerned citizens and local business owners. Uh, our company has been operated in Nubian Square for over thirty years. Prior to that.
Please, uh, please don't read to us, give us bullet points, loved, loved author, he was the ge- he was the best.
Thank you, thank you very much, we we agree, but we've been, we've been, we're a ninety-two-year-old business. And we've been operating in Nubian Square for the last thirty years. Our, our chief complaint from a business standpoint, as well as, as as traffic, right now, traffic is, is at a standstill. Um, as Nubian Square stands today, that's, I don't, that's everyday life, but it also affects the. Uh, our business, which relies on the free flow of traffic, obviously with so many more cars on the road for food deliveries, Amazon deliveries. FedEx, UPS, there's just more and more, so in our mind, to add. Um, add more cars and people to the, to the, to the square. Uh, seems excessive, um. Are. Been looking back at the Roxbury Strategic Plan from about seventeen years ago.
So, so could you, so besides traffic, is there anything else? Um, that, um, that, that, so I guess you're talking about the volume of traffic, um, and i- anything else?
I think, I think what we would, we prefer to see is, is open space. Uh, both from a community standpoint, and one thing we've learned over the last two years is that having readily accessible, nice, open space within a community. Where people can know each other outside if necessary, certainly at a premium. That would, I think, better keep in character of the square itself, as well as. Uh, give people and residents a place to go and meet and gather without. Without the constraints of indoors.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Any, Miss Ambassador, any other raised hands?
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Joe Becker, and I'm a development officer with the Department of Neighborhood Development. Speaking in support of the project, we've been partnered with the Cruz and the development team for over two years, um. And as presented, the project delivers multiple public benefits, including significant affordability in the rental and condominium. Components of the project.
Madam Chair, I have two more raised hands.
Anybody who's spoken, please lower your hand, so we get a, a sense of who we need to call on.
Caller thirteen, you've been unmuted, please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Perez, representing the carpenters union, would like to go on record in support of this project, thank you.
That is it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, given that information, board members, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve uh with BPDA designer view.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mister Secretary, thank you, board.
Madam Chair, it's now eleven forty-five, I'm gonna call to the record for the recommendations that were heard, um, at ten ten Mass Ave last Thursday.
Yes, please go ahead.
Yep, this was Thursday, October fourteenth, at five P M at ten ten Mass Ave. Case BOA one one nine three five seven four fifty Elm Street was denied without prejudice, it was withdrawn. Case BOA one two 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 three six zero zero fifty Elm Street was to renovate, renovate the entire unit, move existing shed in addition. It was approved with BPDA on exterior. Case BOA one two three four one two one ten Mount Vernon Street was the demolition of interior partition walls, new look kitchen. It was approved with BP, BPDA for exterior and dormer on the Mount Vernon Street side. Case BOA one two four two zero one two twenty-eight Cross Street. Was in, in addition to the back deck of a master bedroom on the third floor, it was approved, BPDA for exterior deck. Case BOA one two two one eight five five six seventy-one East Sixth Street. Was to confirm occupancy, a single-family dwelling, change occupancy to two-family, it was approved with BPDA on exterior and no, no bedroom in the basement. Case BOA one two four two one eight eight eighty-eight Street was denied without prejudice. Case BOA one zero five seven three six seven thirty-three Beldum Street was denied without prejudice. Case BOA one two two seven zero seven nine fifty-seven to fifty-nine Grayton Road. Was approved with BPDA for exterior and attention to the dormer of height and size. Case BOA one two three three four four eight Hesborough Road was approved with BPDA. Provide, the napling was divided from plot plan prior to the final decision. Case BOA one two one four five five eight two forty-seven Willow Street. Was a first-floor addition, the rear of the existing was approved with BPDA for exterior and attention to the dormer of height and the ridgeline of the roof. Case BOA one two two six one six two thirty-two to thirty-four Kenrick Street. Was for old rear dormer and new bathroom, was approved with BPDA and attention to the roof line, roof ridgeline. Madam Chair, that concludes the subcommittee's report of October fourteenth, we need a motion.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to concur with the recommendations of the subcommittee, second.
There's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Gonna call the next case, calling BOA one two two three zero two one twenty-seven Bradshaw Street. This was to enclose the existing porch on the first and second floor, a kitchen and two bathrooms for renovation. The violation is Article sixty, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive, and Article nine, section one, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please. Mister Cooney on.
Yes.
Please, uh. Yes, and please proceed and tell us what's being proposed.
Twenty-seven Bradshaw, Shaw Street in Dorchester. Um, my understanding is the building is high on its F A R.
So hold on, your name and address for the record?
Uh, Tom Cooney, six twenty-one East Second Street, South Boston.
Okay, and so you're proposing to enclose a porch on the second, first and second floor?
Yes, the building's structure is that the porches do not extend out past the exterior walls, they're interior porches. Um, the room was just trying to be enclosed so that it could make a larger bedroom, a larger closet for the bedroom.
And how many units in this building?
There are four units in the building.
So it's a four-family and you're incre- okay, how are the plans, um, Mister Robinson?
Uh, I mean, the plans are generally okay, I I think I understand the scope that he's proposing, I don't have any exterior. Elevations of what is changing and what that aesthetic is, um. I do have a question, so maybe we can even go to the first page, Madam Ambassador, on the, just cuz it's the picture of the building, you know, maybe you could. So are you therefore proposing to move the decks outboard of the column bays, and you're enclosing this column front, is that correct?
Uh, no, sir, actually, the enclosure of the porches is in the rear of the building, in the inset into the building. On the exterior, on the front there, there's no proposed change to change.
Okay, and how many square feet is proposed to be enclosed in the rear?
Approximately three hundred to four hundred square feet.
Okay. Okay, and um, any extension into the basement or anything like that, or into the attic?
No, there is not.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Aye, yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm from People's Service, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. On the applicant, was, uh, they have a community meeting run by, uh, the Office of Neighborhood Services on September eighth. And with no, um, community concern was, uh, was raised. Again, we'd like to go on to, uh, in record in support of the proposal, thank you.
Miss Ambassador, any raised hands?
Excuse me, there are no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to support, um, with BPDA design review, they have also reviewed it, and are okay with that.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, you're all set, good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one two one six zero five seven nine Joseph Street. This is to construct new dormers to the roof, make attic livable, and extend living space to the basement for unit one. To an existing three-family dwelling, violations Article sixty-eight, section eight, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article sixty-eight, section eight, the building has excessive stories. Article sixty-eight, section eight, the side yard is insufficient, Article sixty-eight, section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article nine, section one, extension of a non-conforming use, name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name, my name is Matt Mealer from New Architecture, at one A work of industry in Dorchester. I'm representing one of the clients of mine, who is really, uh, who lives on this property.
So tell us what's being proposed.
So this is an existing three-family, um, essentially, we are finishing the basement, so provide a room for the family. Um, who lives, the owner who lives on the first floor, um, where.
So, hold on, so let's just ask you a few questions, tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height in the basement?
Um, existing, it's approximately seven foot six, um, the floor is a bit uneven, so we didn't wanna go down a few inches, um, when they're gonna pay.
Uh, is the utility room separate and can be, can it be accessed, accessed separately?
Yes.
And tell us about the floor-to-ceil height?
Um, we would have to, for the, we could walk in, walk in.
Can you speak into the microphone of your headphones, it's, it's hard to hear.
Yes, I'm sorry, okay, is this better?
A little bit.
Okay, so, uh, there is a walk-down entrance on the front of the building, uh, there is one bedroom we're proposing for the renovation, and we would have to build a window well. For the rear of the building, and that would be a, we could have forty-four inches of a.
And so, so it would bring that first unit to a four-bedroom?
That's right, yeah.
Okay, and then, um, tell us about the, the dormer space?
The existing attic is, is essentially half, uh, the rear of the building is a big, uh, roof deck. Uh, so we're extending that roofline to the rear of the building, and we're extending dormers, um, and we are trying to be sensitive. The, uh, all the houses on this street have a unique kind of, uh, dormer on the front, so we're trying to maintain that aesthetic. So we're trying to push the dormers back to, uh, maintain that aesthetic.
Okay. Okay, how are the plans, Mister Robinson?
Uh, the plans are, are good, I, I really don't have any issue with the attic, uh, extension, I, I think it's. The same issue that we have with most of our below-grade or basement units in terms of the bedrooms, it's just. I mean, it is connected up to the main level unit, however, it's just the sort of typical condition of a lower level.
And where do, where does that bedroom empty into, is it a driveway, or could there be a possibility of a parked vehicle there? In the event of an emergency?
No, man, that's not why I have a parked driveway, it's just.
There's no driveway.
Okay, okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I just, uh, uh, the same as always, and following what Mister Robinson, it, it looks from Google, uh, Maps like. The uh first floor is maybe, I don't know, four or five feet above grade, um, maybe, so I, I'm assuming the. I, I can't tell from the drawings, but it looks like the floor level of the basement is, I would guess, four or five feet below grade, is that? Is, is there an elevation that shows that, Mister Robinson?
There is not an elevation, but there, I mean, there is, it, it shows the dimension, but it's only. So it's about, this calls out it is two, roughly two feet below grade, but it looks a little bit more than that.
Okay, yeah, this picture, Google Maps, it couldn't possibly be.
Yeah.
So, if you look at my proposed elevations, you see the floor.
Speak up, please, Mister Mueller.
Yes, I'm sorry, if you look at the elevations, you'll see the floor-to-ceiling height from the basement floor to the first floor is nine feet. And, uh, the grades of first floor is five feet, so it's approximately four feet below grade, the floor of the basement.
Okay, and, uh, and what's the, what's this, uh, from seeing the elevation on the screen, what's? There's obviously the interior stairwell that you're adding, and then what's the other means of egress?
No, we're gonna, as part of the renovation, we're going to sprinkle this with, uh, city-supplied water, so we're allowed one egress. Um, and we are adding an egress, internal egress for the first floor apartment, so they can access the basement.
Is, is, is there a floor plan of the proposed basement?
Yep, A one O one.
And you put that on, uh, Mister Mueller, the, the issue that we have is that we're not very happy about bedrooms in, uh. In that situation, is there a possibility of, uh, redesigning it so, uh, you use that space, but without having a bedroom there?
If that's our option, then that's what we'll do, absolutely. I think the main concern here is that the owner, he does work at home, he's got a growing family, he's got three children, uh, so there, it's a very tight quarters for them, he's just looking for more space to work.
Uh, I, I, we understand, um, we're just concerned about, um, the quality, uh, uh, light, light quality in the, uh, in the basement, especially. Especially when there's no other means of egress.
Understood. Having access to the basement, the windows are quite large, uh, being four feet above grade, so. I understand the concern, but the light, uh, light quality is actually pretty good on that, and if you require us to remove the bedding, of course, we'll comply with that.
Okay. The questions from the board, is anybody here to speak either? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Denise De Santos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We would like to go on record and support this proposal. They've worked directly with the community groups and also, and constituents, and they have support from direct the voters and as well as the city. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell. We'd also like to go on record and support.
Miss Ambassador, any more raised hands?
I have no raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with B P D A designer review for the dormers.
Um, can I, uh, uh, Mr. Rogero, can I add a proviso that there be no basement in the, uh, the extended living, uh, no bedroom in the extended living space of the basement?
If that's what you gotta do.
Is that, so there's, is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with those provisos, sorry.
I'm in favor, Madam Chair, sorry.
Oh, thank you.
I'm in view.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next two cases, calling D O A one-one-four-one-one-one-zero, three-five-sixty-five American Legion Highway. There's a companion case, D O A one-one-four-one-one-one-one, five-sixty-nine American Legion Highway. This is for five-sixty-five. Project proposes to maintain the existing building and provide minor architectural upgrades to the exterior. Post-site improvements include new site drives, parking drainage structures, payment station, curving, pavement, and vacuum stations. The violation is Article nine, Section one, extension of a non-conforming use. Car wash, car wash is conditional. This is for five-sixty-nine American Legion Highway. This is to change our former liquor store to car wash and site improvements, including the construction of new pavement, site drive, drive aisles, vacuum stations, landscape aisles, security fencing, and dumpster pad with enclosure. The violation is Article sixty-seven, Section eleven, the use and regulations of car wash use is conditional. Name and address for the record, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Marancy, with the business address of three-fifty West Broadway, South Boston. With me today is, uh, the proponent, uh, Matt, Matthew Peisner from Scrub-a-Dub, as well as Kevin Soleil and Casey Birch from Soleil Engineering. So the proposal consists of two parcels located at five-sixty-five and five-sixty-nine American Legion Highway. Five-sixty-five is the existing car wash facility owned and operated by Scrub-a-Dub. Five-sixty-one is recently acquired, uh, which is the adjoining parcel by Scrub-a-Dub as well. So this property lies within the Community Commercial Subdistrict of the Rosendale neighborhood. We are asking the board today for an extension of a non-conforming use to extend...
Uh, hold on, hold on, Miss Ambassador. Can you please go back to the first drawing that you had up on the screen? That, yes, exactly. Yes, okay, go ahead, Mr. Spitz.
We're asking the board today for an extension of a non-conforming use to extend the car wash's facility onto the adjoining parcel. Uh, the adjoint, the car wash is a conditional use, so this will be done through minor architectural upgrades to the exterior of the building, as well as providing site improvements and traffic flow enhancements. You will notice that there's an existing vacuum station on five-sixty-five, which will be removed. Uh, the removal of these existing vacuum stations will create three lanes of entry into the car wash rather than the existing one. This will improve the current traffic flow on American Legion Highway. That's due to the idling of vehicles trying to enter into the current one-lane entry into the car wash. New and sound improved vacuum stations will now be relocated onto five-sixty-nine. The enclosed dumpster pad will also be on five-sixty-nine, which will be in the rear of the property. Other improvements to both parcels will consist of new pavement, a site drive, drive aisles, landscape aisles, security fencing, parking, drainage structures, and faster payment. I think at this point, it's, it's good to note take about the drive aisles that are gonna, going to be installed. Uh, so the original curb cut that you would notice is, the existing was a hundred and forty feet. Uh, so now that there will be only two curb cuts for entry and exit, and both of those curb cuts will be at thirty feet. Uh, so that will enhance the actual safety of any sort of pedestrians that are walking, instead of having to walk through the entire curb cut of a hundred and forty feet. There'll be a space in the, in between separating them for, for safety reasons.
So can you speak about the circulation? So somebody comes in, gets their car washed, they want to dry and vacuum, how does that circulation work?
Okay, so when they enter in through American Legion Highway, you'll see that, um, you know, as, as far as, I think this set of plans shows it right here. So soon as you enter in, there'll be three lanes, um, so that you will enter into the three lanes, and that will mitigate some traffic congestions from, due from the idling. So then you're going to follow those lanes, and then you're gonna come around to the left-hand side where you will enter into the facility. And as you're entering to the facility, you'll enter the car wash. To the right, some people don't, uh, decide to vacuum, uh, a- at this point in time, they can just pull out. Others who decide to vacuum, they'll just pull to the right. So the existing vacuum stations, uh, that, that's what the new proposal. The existing vacuum stations are a little bit more complex. They have the vacuum stations exactly where you enter into the, in, into the premises, the one-lane premise. On the left-hand side is where you would enter a vacuum station. So really, for safety, uh, it becomes a big concern there that you're pulling in, vacuuming prior to getting a car wash while people are trying to enter as well. Uh, there'll be plenty of...
Yeah, my observation is that when people exit the car wash, they do currently operate and park all over the front, drying their cars, um, before taking off. Um, so is that enough space for those four spots that you've provided for dry-off once you've opened those three lanes of tra- of lineup?
So, I think, I think there's, you know, those are the spots right on, in the front. I- i- am I correct in stating that, Madam Chair? Okay, so I know there's gonna be a...
Can you hear me? This is Matthew Peisner, the owner of the...
Sure, Matt, Matt, Matthew can probably, you know, give you a little bit more of the surrounding geography of the car track.
And Matthew, please put your name and address on the record and speak up.
Yeah, this is Matthew Peisner. I'm part of the third generation of the family-owned car wash company, Scrub-a-Dub. We've operated this property for over fifty years, um, s- since, uh, the late, uh, sixties, early seventies. Um, this, uh, proposal, uh, to, to address your question, Madam Chair, so we had a few objectives in mind here. One was to create a significantly safer, um, entry and queuing scenario for all the cars, to remove the cars from queuing on American Legion Highway. The second, wh- which you've highlighted, is to create additional space for drying off. So all of those, uh, areas that you see that are designated as vacuum spaces, they'll, they'll also be designated as dry-off areas, and there will be vending machine and, um, complimentary towels and window cleaner all along the adjacent new property that we purchased that formerly had a liquor store on it. So the designated dry-off area and vacuum area will all be relocated to the new, new property that we've acquired. The existing car wash will remain. Um, the objective that we have here is to just improve safety, uh, improve the equipment, the, the vacuum technology, um, and improve the design. So there's some, uh, minor facade work to the existing building.
And are you proposing any screening and buffering to the rear and at the sidewalk?
I'm gonna let Kevin Soleil, who is the engineer, uh, on this, speak to the screening and buffering if you don't mind.
Sure.
Good evening, uh, members of the board, for record, my name's Kevin Soleil. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with Soleil Engineering. Office is located, uh, at eleven Vanderbilt in Horwood, Mass. Um, so as part of our, uh, proposed expansion, as, um, uh, the Attorney Spitz walked through, um, we are proposing, um, uh, additional fencing along that entirety of the property line to provide some additional, um, screening in that area. Um, and in addition, just some landscaping, which is captured on our, uh, plans to show, uh, how we're able to maintain some, like, vegetation and that supplement as needed. Uh, I think to, to Matt's point, the, the circulation and the, um, area designated for the activities kind of post-car wash have been expanded considerably now that we have the ability to provide all those additional vacuum spaces along that side of the building.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Robinson, in your deep experience with car washes, how are the plans?
I, I, I wash my own car, but, um, I think that the, uh, I think the, the reorganization of the site is actually, I think, gonna be quite successful. Um, I do echo some concern about the perimeter buffering, but I think that's something that we can, um, address, uh, when we make a motion.
Any questions from the board? As somebody who's used this car wash in the past, I do think this is a vast improvement. Um, is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, my name is Ujra Nocchi with the Office of Neighborhood Services, um, five-six-five and five-six-nine, or the Scrub-a-Dub. They had a, um, a butters meeting on September eighth, where the Neighborhood Association Mount Hope Canterbury, um, offered their support as well. And we asked that the board put a proviso that they must be complying with city ordinances in terms, in regards to us supporting them. And we also hope that they work with the local communities to ensure pedestrian and cyclist safety.
I'm sorry, so, uh, what city ordinance? Were you talking about recycling their water, or what do you...
No, 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 cyclists, like bicycles.
Okay.
Pedestrian and cyclist safety.
Okay.
And just any city ordinances that may come up, but the Office of Neighborhood Services will support.
Okay.
Anybody else...
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Councilor Andrea Campbell's office. We'd also like to go on record and support echoing the mayor's comments and just that the team would continue to work with, um, the Transportation Department in their, uh, ongoing efforts to make, uh, American Legion Highway a safe thoroughfare for, for cars, for bicy- bicyclists and pedestrians.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have one letter from Walk, Ride, Rosendale, in support.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands. Rick, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, it's, uh, Rick Yoder, uh, one-eighty Mount Hope Street, uh, Rosendale. And, uh, thank, thank you, Madam Chair, for this opportunity. I would also say there's, uh, great, uh, improvements in this, uh, uh, proposal over what's been there for decades, it's long needed, particularly the three-layered lanes of parallel parking there for the, uh, entry. Our, my, uh, objection, uh, has to do with the curb cuts. Of course, it's a great improvement, it was there. Uh, thirty feet, I think, is excessive, uh, over the ordinance requirements. This is twenty-four. But, uh, more importantly, I, I, um, I think the right-hand side should be entrance only, and the exit side, and the left side should be exit only, and decrease the curb cut that, I could then be, decrease down to the legal limit of, uh, twelve feet. And the reason is, the two thirty-foot curb cuts will still be a challenge, a dangerous challenge for pedestrians on that sidewalk. And I, and I do not see the need for the in-and-out. If someone wants to use the vacuum, they can get to it from the right-hand side.
Okay, thank you.
Secondly, just secondly, I'd like to say, there is no real, uh, information about the sidewalk, like, what is it gonna look like? At the Conservation Commission, it looked like there was going to be in the center of it a depression for the water to flow from the, the parking lot, the front part of the parking lot onto the highway, which I thought was strange, but it was hard, there was no speaking to that, and I'd like to have that clarified. But mostly, I want this to go to the Transportation Department, particularly the Act of Transportation Division, which is the people who've been working on American Legion are most familiar with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Miss Beattie, can you go ahead?
Lisa, you've been unmuted. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please. Lisa? Okay. All right, Miss...
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Lisa, we can hear you now.
Thank you, sorry if I was shouting. Um, thank you so much for this opportunity, I appreciate it. Um, so the letter that Mount Hope Canterbury Neighborhood Association sent to the, uh, zoning board of appeals and to our, um, elected and appointed representatives...
Lisa, can you please just, uh, bullet point, um, whether you're in support or in opposition? And then just bullet point what, what it is that you're in support of or in opposition of?
Sure. Um, yes, so, uh, what, I'm support of this thriving business, um, and the, uh, the attempts, um, to make some significant improvements. I'm in opposition to the, uh, the full current plan being approved without narrowing those curb cuts to the city, uh, ordinance, uh, maximum twelve feet per lane. And, uh, I, uh, I echo Rick Yoder in that, um, having a one-way entrance, um, on the northern side, and a one-way exit at the southern side would be, um, much safer. Um, otherwise, the people exiting the northern exit would be, uh, accelerating quickly, um, and with eyes on the on- oncoming traffic and would not be looking for pedestrians or cyclists. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, m- Miss Ambassador, any other raised hands, or are we good to go?
We're good to go, Madam Chair, no more hands.
Given that information, uh, let's just see what the B P D A's recommendation is. Be submitted for design review with screening and buffering, and it's a G odd green valve protection overlay district. Um, so given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion for approval with, uh, B P D A design review, in particular, looking at issues of screening and buffering, and also the curb cut, the size of the curb cut, um, and, uh, the B T D review for, uh, entrance and access as well.
Just a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is now twelve sixteen, uh, go ahead, uh, good luck. It is now twelve fifteen, the, the board will adjourn until twelve-thirty, and we will commence then with the, uh, agenda items for eleven o'clock. Thank you. Thank you. Let's get started. Mr. Fortune, I see that you're there. Mr. Ehrlich, are you on?
I'm there.
Ms. Donk?
Pardon? Still chewing.
Oh, still chewing, okay, good. So we know there's no fainting on the agenda here. Mr. Regiro?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Yep, back.
Excellent. Mr. Hampton? From the BPDA, are you on?
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Excellent, let's proceed.
Madam Chair, I'm going to do the eleven o'clock again and then I'm going to go right to the twelve thirties for deferrals and withdrawals. So do eleven o'clock right now for any deferrals or withdrawals. Do we have any? Okay, so I'm going to go right to the twelve thirties, it's now twelve thirty-one. Are there any deferrals or withdrawals for twelve thirty? Give me the address.
Yes, Mr. Fortune, this is Attorney Joseph Feaster.
Mr. Feaster, could you give me the address first?
Certainly, nine Downer Court.
Sure, for the record, calling DOA one one seven zero five four two nine Downer Court. Name and address for the record.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joseph Feaster from the law firm of McKenzie and Associates, one eighty-three State Street in Boston, zero two one zero nine.
Mr. Feaster, are you requesting a deferral?
Well, Madam Chair, I need to discuss the issue with you. I know the board's reticent about granting deferrals and I need to explain to you the circumstances and certainly have the board make that determination. This, originally when this matter was presented, my client, the applicant had twelve, was proposing a project with twelve units. And after getting a deferral recently and, and meeting with the community, the applicant submitted a new plan with nine units, one of which would be affordable. Regrettably, the timeframe for it to be viewed or reviewed by the examiner was not adequate and we were asked by the Board of Appeals in order to get a defer. However, my sense is that with the reduction in the number of units, there would not be any change in the variances needed. So we are prepared to go forward if that's the board's wish, but if not, we would wait, request a deferral.
Madam Chair, this is, this is Eric. I, I do not have drawings for nine Downer.
Yes, so, Mr. Feaster, that's generally why we asked ISD to review the plans and forward them to us just so that we are confirmed on everything and we are not guessing and putting your, your client at risk when they go into financing. So let's.
I'll, I'll make a motion for a deferral.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Eric.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
We're going to do December seventh at eleven thirty. That's December seventh, yeah, December seventh at eleven thirty.
Excellent, see you then, Ms.
Very much, Madam Chair, member of the board.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for twelve thirty? Give me the address first, please.
Seventy Shoshine Road.
For the record, calling DOA one two 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 three zero seven seventy Shoshine Road. Name and address for the record, please.
Laurence Catino from Richard Lynn's office, two forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston. I am seeking a deferral today. We had to swap out some plans with inspectional services, which led to another violation, so it needs to be re-noticed.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion for deferral.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The date, please.
You'll also have a date of December seventh at eleven thirty.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the twelve thirty cases?
Six sixty-one Tremont Street.
For the record, calling DOA one zero five three one eight one six sixty-one to six sixty-one A Tremont Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, James Christopher of RCA LLC with a business address of eleven fifty-six Duarte Street. Requesting a brief deferral, the plans are refiled with ISD, we'd like to meet with the neighbors one more time and come back to the board for a hearing.
I have a motion, please.
Motion for a deferral.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please.
You'll also have a date of December seventh at eleven thirty.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for twelve thirty? Address first, please.
Is there?
Is West Newton Street, is West A Street or E seventh, E six eighty-three E seventh street on? Is all intentions of being deferred?
Do we have anything in writing on two fifteen West Newton Street, Mr. Fortune?
No, Madam Chair, other than what Stephanie has given us that they're going to seek a deferral.
So let's just go ahead with our eleven o'clock.
Okay. Going to go back to the eleven o'clock hearings, calling the first case, calling DOA one two zero three one one four three ninety-six to three ninety-eight Hanover Street. This is the removal of the existing proviso for takeout grants to this petitioner only. Violation Article six, section four, other conditionals necessary for protection, a change in the previous decision. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Tom Miller, McDermott Quilting Miller, twenty-eight State Street in Boston. We are here before you today, we're requesting the removal of the proviso, as Mr. Secretary said, from the previous relief granted in BGC three one seven six five, limiting that, that relief to this petitioner only. The applicant is proposing, I'm sorry.
Hold on, can you tell us the name of the old use, the name of the new use, and if the new use has experience with takeout?
Absolutely. The, the most recent previous grant of relief was my cousin's place. And that was specifically the operator was Daniel Delia. The new use is going to be Gen Royal, Table by Gen Royal LLC, DBA Table Cafe. She has extensive experience in the restaurant industry, including takeout use directly across Hanover Street. The point of this is to move some of her existing takeout use from her locate, one of her locations across the street to this space, freeing her up to more properly conduct that type of use and adding coffee and gelato and a larger pastry selection and takeout sandwiches to this, to this space and to the community, as an amenity to the community.
That's exactly what we need post-pandemic or almost post-pandemic, okay?
Hopefully, almost post-pandemic.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I guess, I assume there's no exterior changes being proposed. Is that correct?
Just, just a sign for the new space.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support of or in opposition to this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. This is John Armando from the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. This project throughout its community process had received support from the North End Waterfront Residents Association, opposition from the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council, and then had received letters of support as well from the community. At this time, we'd like to go on a record of support of this project. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael DiNetti from the Office of Boston City Council, Lydia Edwards. Council would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Thank you, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve for the usual takeout language and BPDA design review for signage.
I'll second that, Eric.
And to this petitioner only?
And to this petitioner only, indeed.
I'll second that again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 1248286, 663E 6th Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family. Renovate the existing carriage house and connect the carriage house to the existing structure with a conditioned garage. The violation is Article 68, Section 29. Building extension into the rear of the yard. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking loading. Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking loading design. Article 68, Section 8, usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, side yard insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8.4, dimensional regulations, the extension into the rear yard. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark LaCast, LaCast Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston. I represent the owners of this property, two families, Chris and Ashley Leroy and Brian McPherson and Megan French. The Leroy's and the McPhersons occupy the existing two-family at the front of the property, which they just completed renovations on pursuant to building permits that were issued as a right. And the proposal before you today relates to the existing carriage house in the rear of the property. If we could advance to the next screen, you'll get a sense of what it currently looks like. Perfect, stop right here. So the picture on the lower right-hand corner is the carriage house, which is existing in the rear of this two-family property. And the image on the upper left-hand side is the current proposal before you, and that is to convert the carriage house into a single unit and a parking space therein, connected to the existing main house by virtue of that garage with the deck on top of the garage for the new unit.
Is there a rear yard addition too?
No. What's being called the rear yard addition is this renovation to the existing carriage house because it is adding living area where none currently exists. It's just a garage, as you can see. So under Art...
Um, Mr. Ambassador, can you go back a slide, please? Okay, stop right there, thank you. So go ahead.
Yep, so the addition, if you will, is the garage piece connecting the existing two-family to the carriage house to do a number of things. One is to run the sprinkler system from the main house to the rear of the property into the carriage house and to also provide a connection for fire safety reasons from the front property into the rear of the property and to provide parking in the garage and to provide some usable open space on top of the garage for the unit that will be, that is being proposed in the carriage house. And under Article 68, Section 8.4, if you extend anything into a rear yard in South Boston that creates 1,000 or more square feet of living area, you need a conditional use permit. So that extension into rear yard, both for the living area and the deck on top of the garage are conditional use permits that are being sought.
Let's, let's back up a little bit. Was this particular address before this board before?
It was not.
Okay, so this is an MFR district?
Yes.
And tell us what the rationale is for, for basically covering the entire lot with a building? It seems like the, the lot already has, it's a MFR district. Let's just see, it is, um...
Madam Chair.
Seems to have a high use. So tell us why this, this, this should be approved by this board?
Yep. Um, the carriage house, of course, is an existing structure, so the only piece that's being added to the lot is that one-level garage to provide some enclosed parking for the main house. The carriage house is existing and is essentially remaining the same size and is simply being converted to an additional dwelling unit. It is an MFR and the ISD property records for this property indicated that the main house was in fact a three-family. So if you will, we're taking that additional unit that did exist at this property and moving it into the carriage house, which is in dilapidated condition and essentially is falling apart.
Because it looks like with your proposed multi-story addition, it looks like your, the proposal is bringing you within a couple of feet of that rear yard.
So again, in the, in the rear yard, that depicts the existing carriage house, which is already there. So we're not, we're not increasing any of the non-conformities with respect to the footprint of the building. And in fact, we're improving the condition on one side of the property. We discovered when we did the site plan that the existing carriage house actually encroaches onto the neighbor's property. So we're pulling in that wall, eliminating the encroachment and pulling it inboard a bit from its existing condition. The rear yard is, again, existing condition and no changes being made.
Just ask you, what, what is the height, please? What is the height, then, of that building if I was standing in your rear neighborhood, rear neighbor's yard and looking at it? How tall would that building be?
If we could scroll to the next slide. The same height that it is today, Madam Chair. No, no addition is being added. It looks a little different, yes, but it's the same, same structure. In fact, an earlier proposal did have an extra floor, but through the community review process that has come off. So the carriage house as it exists and the carriage house as renovated are the same height and the same size.
Okay, I see that that drawing is a little bit deceiving because it has those long shadow lines beneath it.
Yeah, I think that was a function of printing and scanning.
Okay.
Yeah, the existing building remains the same.
Just while, just while we're looking at this picture, just to confirm, the face of the existing garage where it has the sort of white and the red barn, that you are proposing to extend the addition on the second floor to that line, is that correct? So you're bringing it forward closer to the house, but you're...
We're connecting it to the house. It's presently not connected and we are connecting it and that was...
But the, I mean, the second floor piece is going to extend forward in this picture toward us to the face of the existing...
No, no, that's an open deck, Mr. Robinson.
Okay.
Second floor, the second floor remains within the confidence of, I'll call it, the mansard roof on the renovated structure. So the second floor does not come connecting to the house. There's, that's an open deck space to provide some usable open space for the unit in the carriage house.
But, Mr. LaCast, you're eliminating all of the existing open space, correct? I mean, that backyard there between the house and the carriage house is all gone.
Yeah, but there, there's an existing deck for the unit on the upper floor. This new deck will be open space for the carriage house. And it's, it's a fairly large lot, so it, it doesn't feel crowded. In fact, the FAR is not an issue that we've triggered because there's, even with this conversion to residential space, the FAR is still below 2.0.
Yes, um, so, well, yeah, MFRs are generally, what's the, what's the, the square foot of the lot?
Um, the square foot of the lot is, hold on. The chart here that has, oh, the, the square foot of the lot is 4,125 square feet, which would allow for 8,250 square feet of gross living area, including the garage, including the parking space in the existing carriage house. The total there is 2,0560 plus the existing 3794. So the total square footage as proposed is 6,354, which is less than the 8,250 that would be allowed as a right with a 2.0 FAR. And MFR is...
I, I think this is kind of creative, getting away from two buildings on the same lot by getting the connection. So how many parking spaces will be provided for all the units?
Yes, Madam Chair, and on that point, it is creative and it's creative from an architectural and from a fire safety code standard that it permits the fire safety systems from the front building to be carried to the back of the building.
We got that, so tell us how many parking spaces on this entire lot?
There are two parking spaces in that enclosed garage, that's the connection piece. Then there's one parking space in the proposed for the carriage house renovation, so three enclosed. And then there's room for cars in the driveway as well.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are good. I, I, I'm gonna, I just don't believe that the council is representing this correctly. The proposal is 31 and 1/2 feet deep. And if you look at your A101, A01 plan, the existing garage footprint is not 31 and 1/2 feet deep. But that being said, I, I don't have necessarily a problem with the proposal. I just want to make sure we're clear. The garage in the rear does appear to align with the rear facing and the height does seem to be consistent with the existing. It feel, but it seems as though the garage is being added to, closer to the back of the main house along with the one-story.
So which plan are you looking at, Mr. Robinson?
Pardon me?
Which plan are you looking at? A101, did you say?
Well, that's the existing footprint plan, A101. And you could see in red what's remaining.
And, and, Mr. Robinson, my client just texted me and said, "That is true." And in part, it has to do with the encroachment on the western side, which goes over the neighbor's yard. We're pulling that wall in and it's part of that being realized.
Yep, and that's not, that's not in question. I just want to make sure the board understood. We're not exactly dropping a new, a new building off of the existing footprint. It's a little bit bigger, but it is consistent and I understand, I understand the straightening of the property line as well, so.
And how large is that proposed carriage unit? What square feet, how many square feet?
It is a 1,400 square foot unit, Madam Chair.
Okay, any questions from the board?
No further questions from me, thanks.
Madam, Madam Chair, Mr. D'Amico has spoken this. I'd like to put his comments into the record. Regarding 663E 6th Street. Mr. D'Amico has a problem with 663E. Three cars parked in a row can present problems since the car fathers away from the curb cut would require two cars to move out of the street, out into the street to allow the car to exit the driveway. Therefore, he cannot approve the design.
Thank you. Any questions from the board, either related to the parking or anything else?
All right, it just, it just does seem a little bit of a sly move to get away from having two dwelling, two separate dwelling units on the same property, but...
Yes, we've, in the past, we did have one of this, a, a project like this. And for some reason, I want to say that maybe you were the attorney on this, were you?
Yes, that was on East, East Fifth Street. And that project has been completed and I, I would, I would invite the board to look at it. It, it came out phenomenal and it's a fantastic use of space for these dilapidated carriage houses. And again, the, the connection point is, is patently transparent. It is, it is for public safety reasons, it is for fire protection reasons, it is for a whole host of building code reasons.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Billy Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, would like to go record in support based on the community feedback and the applicant working with the community on their feedback. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Counselor Flinks' office. The council would like to go on record in support based on a true community process and good faith compromises between the neighbors and development team on quality of life issues like placement of a window. Moreover, Counselor Flinks is supporting the project due to the development team agreeing to a proviso regarding no roof deck on the carriage house in perpetuity to run with the property. Neighbors and the City Point Neighborhood Association have been adamant that the agreement proviso be included with the decision due to the negative impacts that no roof decks have had for neighbors, which escalated during the pandemic, most to the detriment of our seniors, persons with disabilities and young families. Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here. We do have letters of support, we do have a couple of letters of opposition.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two raised hands. Brad, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, this is Brad Wallace at 660 East Sixth Street, South Boston. I live across the street from the proposed development. I'd just like to go on record in saying that both families have done a fantastic job of engaging the community. Multiple meetings have been held, our input has been considered and changes have been made.
Thank you.
I do appreciate the fact that both families plan on living here. It's, it's very common to see developers come in and build up and then flip the property for profit and that's not the case in this scenario. So they're doing a great job of improving the neighborhood and putting great use to a dilapidated building.
Thank you.
And then I have... Luann. Luann, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Luann O'Connor, Chair, City Point Neighborhood Association. The association would like to go on record in support of this building. Madam Chair, you are correct. You did in fact look at another building like this at K and Fifth and Attorney LaCast is correct. It did in fact come out fantastic. The two proponents that are presenting this particular development have been openly and graciously working with the neighborhood, taking into consideration the feedback, and this is the end result of the community process. So with that, we would like to go on record as support.
Thank you.
I have no more raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review. I, I think if, if we could also, or they could focus on maybe the driveway and buffering of, since we are paving basically the balance of the site, to see if they can enhance the quality of that space a little bit.
Would you like BTD review, given Mr. D'Amico's comments?
Madam, Madam Chair, if I might, I...
Oh, excuse me, the board is in discussion here.
I mean, I think it's, it's gonna be tricky. I understand the concern. I, I, they, they can try to work with BTD and see if there's a resolution. I just don't see where it's gonna happen due to the size of the parcel.
Okay, may I have a second? Is there, all those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next...
I, I just, I just wanted to say that the proponents agree to the no roof deck proviso and will happily include that in the draft decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calling the next two cases, calling DOA 1249236, 40 to 42 Terrace Street. There's a companion case, DOA 1249238, on 32 Terrace Street. This is for 40 to 42. Property is currently being built as an artist's live-work housing under existing zoning. Violation is Article 59, Section 18, a multifamily dwelling is forbidden. This is for 132. This property is also being currently built for affordable artist's live-work housing. Violation is Article 59, Section 18, multifamily dwelling is forbidden. Name and add... Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stephen Meyer. I represent Primary Development at 3326 Washington in Jamaica Plain. Thank you very much for your time. We're here to present this. We've received, as mentioned, all the previous zoning asks. Unfortunately, during the initial process, we made a design change along the way. And when the ISD, the refusal documents were updated, it was accidentally left off that we were requesting the multifamily variance. This is because technically, artist's live-work doesn't require it. However, DND, who is our partner in this project, explicitly requested it so that it could be sold to the wider affordability pool if necessary. So we're just coming back to the board to add on that multifamily residential variance.
Mr. Ambassador, can you back up for a minute, please? To show the location, so 40 to 42 Terrace Street. And at the top of the street is Tremont, basically.
Yes, correct.
Okay. You know, I drive by this fairly frequently. And did you, were there changes to the plans? Because it looks like that building at 4042 is on a higher, has one of those, it has an additional floor setback? Was that what was approved by this board?
No, we're making no changes to the plans whatsoever. That was built as approved. The only thing that you see in the middle is there's a HVAC kind of area that's, that's cordoned off, which was always on the plans before. No changes are being made to the plans or to the plans for the project as a whole. We're simply coming back for the multifamily residential variance.
Yes, but the note does say that you're requesting relief so that the units be sold to a wider affordable housing pool? Because if I remember, both were artist's live-work, and both were supposed to have ground floor displayed space. What is going to happen to that?
So the ground floor of community space, communal space still exists. It is presented as artist's kind of workspace. Obviously, in any, you know, it's, it's public space for the, you know, condo documents. So it will be shared amongst residents. Our intention is still for the units to be sold first and foremost. There's an artist preference on the lottery, which is currently ongoing. We're actually showing the units this next Saturday. However, DND wanted to have the variance for multifamily residential so that, again, if there were not enough artists this round or down the line when homeowners go to sell, that if there doesn't happen to be an affordable artist who qualifies, that they would be able to sell it to someone in the general affordability pool so that we keep that affordability first and foremost.
Because I think one of the big selling points when this came through was that it was supposed to be artist's live-work space. And now this feels like switch and bait and switch or whatever that term is. Do we have anything, do we have anything from Cultural, from Tara's office talking about, about this? Because...
No, so again, none of, none of the plans or the language in our deed documents have changed. Everything is still exactly as it was. And again, you can see I include some of the documents, including our letter of support. We always present it to community groups. And even, I presented it last time because, you know, unfortunately, we didn't catch this change in the zoning documents early enough. But during my presentation, I actually presented for the multifamily residential to the board the last time. Again, we're not looking to change anything. We're not looking to, to clear out artists or make it available in a different way. We simply want to, DND is requesting this variance in order to preserve flexibility so that, in the instance, something isn't available, they have that option.
So these are condo units, right?
Yes, they're homeownership.
Okay, so let me just ask you. You go through this round, and maybe you get 50% artists. You go to the second round, that number decreases. So in essence, it could at some point very quickly become not an artist's live-work space, but a regular multifamily dwelling without, without any artists in proximity or in, in the buildings at all. So is there, there needs to be, if this is presented to this board as, you know, something that promotes artist's live-work, we need to make sure that happens because ultimately, you could have, you know, that frontage space that just sits there without really any real activity in it. So is there somebody here? Have you heard from Tara's office about this?
From Tara? Sorry, excuse me. So we have, unfortunately, because the meeting ran late here, we had Joseph Becker, who's our partner at the Department of Neighborhood Development. He's unfortunately not available to speak currently.
Can I just ask for a motion for deferral? Because I feel very strongly about this project just because we had spent so much time talking about artist's live-work, and then it's just, you know, has the potential of going very quickly into, into the sunset. So may I have a motion for deferral?
Can I quickly ask what's...
No, can I just have a motion for deferral, please?
Make a motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed at the date, please?
November 9th at 11, at 12:30.
Is it 9th or 7th? I'm sorry.
The 9th.
No, oh, sorry, November 9th.
November 9th.
Okay, and please talk to the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs because I know that they have been promoting very much artist's live-work space in new construction that has been part of all their initiatives, at least for the past two or three years, okay?
Can I, can I please ask what the board would like to see in terms of documentation for this? Again, if none of our documents internally have changed, what...
Yeah, you, you'll just have to figure out with the Mayor's Office of Cultural Affairs how you make this and ensure that there is an artist's presence in this building in the long run, okay? Because this, this, this has been going on, at least from what I understand from Cultural Affairs, for a couple of years. Okay, let's move to the next project, please.
Madam Chair, it's Kennedy Avery from Councilor Box's office. Am I able to add comment to the last, or should I...
No, 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 thank you, though. Kennedy will, will, will meet in, in November, November 9th. But please make sure, I think you understand what the concern is because it's not that we don't want it to be affordable, but the goal had always been to promote artist's affordability. And since it's hard to come by in, in conversions, you know, there has been a strong comment about having it occur in new construction. Thank you.
Calling the next case, filing BOA 124-3079-202, Savin Hill Avenue. This is to build a new addition to the existing two-bed, two-bath condo unit. The new addition will include an expanded living room footprint. The first floor and additional second floor above the existing expanded living room. The violation is Article 9, Section 1, extension of non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Go ahead, Michael, you've been unmuted.
Thank you very much. And I'm not sure how to get the camera on here, so I'll just speak through the audio. Hello, everybody, my name is Madam Chair. My name is Michael Chavez, the architect and representative for Mr. Cobb, the owner for this, for this project. My business address is 27 Center Street in Roxbury. The purpose of this project is to allow Mr. Cobb and his family the ability to grow their family within the space they currently have and able to stay in their neighborhood. The reason we're here today is because of Article 9, Section 1. The condo that Mr. Cobb owns was developed as a three-unit building long before he purchased the condo. The original zoning for the neighborhood is 1F7,000, so the original developer went through the zoning process to get the three units approved. However, as I'm sure you've seen in the past, in Article 9, Section 1, triggered when there's any proposals that make any sort of adjustment or addition to the original non-conforming structure. Our design made sure that we follow the regulations of this article and section, Paragraph 2 of Section 1. That's specific to our project, where it states that whenever a building or structure is being lawfully used for a use not conforming to the code, that it's provided after a public notice and hearing. Additionally, that anything that is structurally changed or extended shall not exceed by more than 25%, either in volume or area of the building existing. We've worked with this, go ahead.
Mr. Chavez, can you please tell us, what is the total square foot addition? And generally, what will that, that space be used for?
Sure, so the addition is about 300 square feet. It's just an additional bedroom and an en suite bathroom to the existing two-bed, two, two-bed, one-bath condo that's there now.
Hold on. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are, are fine. This, there's already a first floor extension, so we're just adding on the second floor of that if I'm reading correctly.
Correct. That's great. We're just building above the existing footprint.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
It's, uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The applicant met with abutters on September 8th and addressed concerns regarding backyard space and lighting. Just want to say that the home is owner-occupied. The project is technically as a right. And the other two unit owners are in support. However, many abutters are in opposition. So at this time, our office would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Pierce Martin from Senator Nick Collins's office. We've heard a number of complaints from abutters and neighbors, and due to that, we would like to go on the record in opposition of this project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have five raised hands.
Madam Chair, before we get secretary here, we do have a few letters of support. We also have letters of opposition.
Okay, let's, let's go, Ms. Ambassador.
Donna, you've been unmuted. State your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Donna Lights-McCullogan. I live at 2037 Hill Ave. I'm an executive board member of the Columbia Savin Hill Association, as well as a executive member of the planning committee. And I go on record in strong opposition to this development. Number of reasons, but I will try to be brief. Back in 2010, the church in Boston purchased this property with the idea that they were going to make a church out of it. With strong opposition from the community, they came to us and asked, "Well, if we can have a, three condos," as we all know, it's a one-family zoned area, we will back off on the church demands of cutting down trees and putting in 16 parking spaces and whatnot. And we will, we would just go with that. We have to make our money.
So, so, so ma'am, I just have to ask you a question. So this is a person who is living in the unit, who wants to stay in the, in the community, but just needs a little space to grow. Tell us, can you, can you speak to that? Because that's, that's what, what we're looking at is, is a 300 square foot addition for a bed and bath.
Well, Madam Chair, I would be happy to speak to that because back in 2010, they gave us a promise that they would do no more to the footprint of this Victorian home that was built 150 years ago. We, in exchange, in this community, trusted them that they would no longer make any changes to that building, to that home. In 2018, they tried to subdivide and put two large condos in there. And again, now we, here we are in 2021, where they want to again change the footprint of that Victorian home. The second piece of that is that, yes, they may want to live in the community, but Madam Chair, they do nothing for the community. We hardly know them after 11 years of being here. We hardly see them. The property would then, if it was built, if it's granted, would have a tremendous shadow over the, of direct abutters at 206. So this is just not something the community wants. And I'm sure that you see many, many letters of opposition. And it's just not conformity to this, this community, and it is not being respected. The historic area is not being respected by these people.
Thank you. So let me ask for the additional people who are going to get ready to speak. Please give us new information, whether you're speaking in support or in opposition. So please give us new information. Start with your name and address for, on the record.
Elaine, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name's Elaine Chow. I'm at 207 Savin Hill Avenue. I also wanted to mention that Karen Anastas at 206 Savin Hill Avenue was unable to attend today, but she submitted and a response through the form asking that Donna and I speak on her behalf. So she's, she's on the direct line. I'm diagonal to the property. She is concerned about light and also about precedent. There isn't a lot of trust for the owners and their intentions in this neighborhood. My own concern is that it's already non-conforming, and to approve another nonconformance would just add to the density. And we're having a lot of safety issues with, with traffic, with construction. I have two young children that live here, and we just want to really protect as much as what was zoned as possible.
Gabe, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Itai 202, Savin Hill Ave, Unit 1. I'm at the same condo complex as Michael, and I just wanted to express my support. Michael has a, a child within the past year and looking to expand his family. And it's only 300 square feet addition, and I think that'd be great for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry, I'm the architect representative. I think I was, I just didn't lower my hand.
Okay, okay. Samuel, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Samuel Yusuf. I live at 159 East Carter Street. And I would just like to motion in support of this development. It is a really small addition to this, to this condo. And I, I believe having a way for families to, to stay in the city is, is beneficial for the community. And this is an owner-occupied complex, and so it's not an investor trying to flip. This is just a, a small family trying to stay in the city and to grow their family. And it, and the property itself, the extension, is not excessive. And so I, I think this is something that should, should be approved.
Thank you.
I have no more raised hands, Madam Chair.
Mr. Chavez, when we have a, a number of hands raised in opposition, you know, we do give the representative of the applicant a brief response. I think what I would be interested in is the historic character of the house and, and, and how this would meld in with it. Is Mr. Chavez still on? Did you hear my question?
Yes, sorry, I just was on mute again. So the, the addition itself is on the north side or the non-street side. It's the, the original home is facing the street on Savin Hill. The, the other two units that were built were part of the original home and then kind of towards the back of the house. So this unit is the, the backside of the house and on the north side. And so what we have done is, you know, ensured that, you know, based on the drawings, that everything is kept symmetrical, materials are matched, windows are matched, roof lines are matched. Everything is, is kept the same so that it maintains the existing, you know, nature of that house so that it, you know, again, it maintains what, what's there now. Again, we're just adding that above the existing footprint, so we're not extending into a yard. You know, ensuring that we're in compliance with both zoning in terms of height, FAR setbacks, even within the condo unit association itself. The reason we're building on top of the existing first floor living rooms because we wouldn't want to build into the common areas and part of the condo association. So everything we're doing is attempting to ensure that that little 300 square foot addition is being kept within the, the spirit of the existing building that's there now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I think we've heard from everybody. See? Let me just ask, were there any, were there any limitations? Were there any provisos on the, on the, on the last, last approval that was given by this board?
For the original structure?
Yes, and, and Ms. O'Connor, please, if you can put your comment... And, and Ms. O'Connor, please, uh, if you can put your comment, uh, I know this is an old one, which I, which I just saw, but please, can you put it in, um, in, in, uh, in public chat so that it's, it's now registered in the record, okay? Uh, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chavez.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I'm not a hundred percent sure what the, uh, original zoning process with the community was. It was done a while back and was, like was mentioned, it was done by a church. The church then sold it to individual condo owners. That's gone through several hands since then. So these are individual condo owners, not associated with the original developer or, uh, anyone prior to, to what he's trying to do now with this original building. So, uh, I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure what those original agreements were before it, the condo owners actually owned the condos themselves.
Okay.
Hello, Madam Chair, my name is Tom. Uh, I can speak a little bit on the history of the project. Uh, it doesn't look like it's been to the board, uh, you know, a long time. There was one and trying to pull up the decision now. But it was quite some, it wasn't...
There was a hearing back in twenty ten, Tom.
Yeah, that's what it was like today. Thank you, Jeff. And it was, uh... Converting a two-family dwelling to a three condo unit to add plumbing, counter, cabinets, countertops, appliances, two kitchens. Madam Chair?
There was no proviso on, on anything else?
I don't have a copy of the decision, uh, through our portal. I just have the application.
Okay.
Our, our, our recommendation at the time, Madam Chair, was approval with design review back then.
Okay, cool. Okay. So given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with...
Is there, is there a second?
I'll second that motion, Secretary.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're, so good luck, approval with design review.
Thank you, Board.
Following your next case, calling BOA one one three six nine eight seven, fourteen oh three to fourteen oh five Dorchester Ave. Mister proposed change of existing commercial space into a restaurant with takeout. The violation is Article sixty-five, section eight, Houston regulations. Restaurant, a thousand square feet with takeout use is forbidden. Name and address for the record, please.
Anybody here on this project?
I can go to the next one, Madam Chair, we can come back to it.
Yes, please.
Go on the next case, calling BOA one two one five seven six eight, twenty-six Hitchborn Street. This is a change of ours from twenty-three dwelling units and thirty-six parking spaces to twenty-three dwelling units and twenty-four parking spaces. Violation is Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston. I represent Fillmore Real Estate Investments, which is the new owner of this property. And the proposal before you today is to essentially do two things. One is to correct the record so that it reflects the actual existing conditions in the garage. And two is to reconfigure a few of the spaces on the upper level of the garage to make the handicap space compliant and to eliminate a non-functioning space and thereby allow for expansion of the bike storage room. Um, so what you are seeing on this...
Let me ask you, who was the previous architect on this case?
Previous architect? Um, that I don't know, Madam Chair. Um, but this project was originally approved by the BPDA back in two thousand and eighteen as twenty units with street level commercial space. It was later changed to twenty-three units by converting the street level commercial space to, uh, dwelling units. So we have twenty-three dwelling units. That remains exactly the same. When they changed the commercial space to dwelling units on the street level, they also, uh, requested a, a voluntary addition of the opportunity to do ten car stackers on the upper level of the garage, which would have increased the parking capacity to thirty-six. But that was never installed. It was never installed.
Let's just backtrack. When this was before the board before, what was it approved for?
It originally was approved for twenty units with twenty-six parking spaces with street level commercial space.
With twenty-six parking spaces?
Yes.
And all of, and all of the twenty-six parking spaces were supposed to be provided without stackers?
Yes, and that's the current condition. It's a two-level garage. There are sixteen spaces on the lower level and ten on the upper level. And that's the existing condition, yes.
Okay, so the existing condition is twenty-six parking?
Yes.
And, and twenty-three dwelling units?
Correct. And the twenty-three dwelling...
So let me ask you, how did the twenty-three units come into place without it coming back to this board?
It did come before you.
It did. So the, so it was, so the first time it was here, it was twenty to twenty-six. The second time it was here, it was twenty-three with twenty-six parking spaces?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, so now we're here with twenty-three reduced to twenty-four parking spaces.
Um, there, there was one, one thing to add to your last thought there, and that was, when it was before you on the two thousand and eighteen change to twenty-three units, it was twenty-six spaces and a request for permission to install the ten stackers, which this board granted. And subsequently, ISD issued a certificate of occupancy for the building stating twenty-three dwelling units and thirty-six parking spaces. But the ten stackers were never installed by the prior owner. And my clients acquired the property last year and now seek to correct a couple of things. One is just to get a correct CO to show the existing condition. And if we could advance a couple of slides, I'll show you the proposed change, uh, no changes to the lower level.
So, so I just let me ask you, what is preventing this owner from installing the stackers?
Yes, good question. Um, it won't work. Um, the stackers would have been proposed on the upper level of the garage, and they've looked at two different systems, both of which would significantly impact the fire safety systems in the building, namely the sprinkler heads, um, overhead. It just, they've looked at, um, uh, and I can have my client chime in if you'd like more of the technical specifics, but they've hired traffic consultants and engineers. They've hired parking engineers. They've looked at multiple stacker systems and have been told unequivocally that it would, it would not work to install the stackers, um, to increase the parking capacity, which again, incidentally, was a voluntary ask by the prior owner when they changed the occupancy to increase the dwelling units. It was not a requirement, it was, it was a voluntary ask. Um, if we could advance a couple of slides, please?
So now, now tell us about this request for decrease in number of parking spaces?
Yep, so, uh, if we could advance a slide, please? So lower level remains exactly the same, sixteen spaces, um, no change to the lower level. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is the upper level of the garage, um, which currently has ten parking spaces, but the end product will be eight parking spaces. And that is, if you can see on the left-hand side, the current handicap parking space, um, is too small. It's not code compliant. So the proposal is to eliminate one of the parking spaces and to actually create a code compliant, functional handicap parking space on the upper left-hand corner there. And then on the right-hand side of the diagram, parking space number ten just doesn't work. Nobody uses that space because it's virtually impossible to get into it. So the shaded crosshatching there proposal is to, um, expand the existing bike storage room, which is actually quite popular in this building, and to make the bike storage room occupy the space that was occupied, uh, designated as space number ten. So we'd have sixteen spaces on the lower level, and then this would be the configuration of the upper level. Um, and that is the scope and extent of the proposed change and how we'd end up at, uh, twenty-four parking spaces with a code compliant handicap parking space and then expanded bike storage room.
Okay, um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are good. I think they, uh, the councils explain the, the situation perfectly well. Makes total sense to me. No issues, no questions.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, with no record in support of this proposal. Uh, we conducted a butters meeting on July twelfth where no concerns were raised. Um, we have not heard any objections from any butters of the broader neighborhood. Uh, they went to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association and received their support as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Maura McCray from Council of Brighton's office. We'd like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
I see Annabelle Gomes, um...
Oh, yes, I see her now, sorry. Annabelle, you're, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Hey, given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Following your next case, calling BOA one one nine four five zero two twenty-six Arlington Street. This is to confirm Oxford is a single-family building and changed to a three-family residential building with three parking spaces and in addition to the rear of the structure. The violation is Article ten, section one, the limitation of off-street parking area. Article fifty-one, section fifty-six, off-street parking and loading. Article fifty-one, section eight, three F and a two F zone is forbidden. Article fifty-one, section nine, the lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-one, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-one, section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-one, section nine, the front yard is insufficient. Article fifty-one, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article fifty-one, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney John Pugini on behalf of the applicant. Uh, today with me is Jacob Simmons and Eric Zacherson, who is the team architect. As Mr. Fortune said, the proposal is to convert a single-family to a three-family by adding a rear addition with three off-street parking spaces. The zoning, uh, sub-district is two F five thousand. This lot size is four thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven square feet. Uh, Arlington Street is a mixed-use street with mostly multifamily housing and some dense multifamily residential buildings, together with St. Columbus Hills, which on the development team has had extensive outreach and will coordinate it. Um, I'll touch on the violations if that's okay, Madam Chair?
Please first tell us what's being proposed and how it's going to be, uh, uh, how it's going to be accomplished?
So it's a, uh, a rear addition. So nothing to the front of the house, nothing to the side of the house. It's a rear addition that will extend the building, um, and that will add two units to the building.
And how many square feet is that?
Uh, the rear addition is approximately twenty-four hundred square feet, Madam Chair.
Um, and that, that's a twenty-four hundred square feet addition? And then, um, and what is the proposed unit sizes?
So, uh, unit one is a thousand seventy-four square feet. That is a three-bed, two-bath. Uh, unit two is twelve hundred and eighty-three square feet. That also is three-bed, two-bath. And unit three is a thirteen hundred and fifty-eight square foot. That is three-bed, two-bath. And it's worth noting, um, because I know it's important to the board, that all the units will be on individual floors. There's no living space in the basement, just mechanically.
So tell us about the rear and the side yard, because that's where the neighbors will be most impacted.
Yeah, so the, the side yard violations are existing, Madam Chair. Uh, we're not touching the side yard at all, so those are currently...
But you are extending it into the rear yard. You are doing an ex, rear extension.
Yep, so we're staying within the, uh, the boundaries of the existing structure right now. Um, and what was, I'm sorry, you said there was, so on one side of that, let me just touch, I, I apologize. Um, on one side of the yard, uh, it's five point six and three point two. And then on the side where the driveway is, we have twenty-two feet. Um, and with that, we're able to do a, uh, four-foot buffer landscape area, uh, to that butter.
And how about the rear yard?
Uh, the rear yard, uh, required because it's a shallow lot rule, is twenty-seven feet, six inches, and we're providing twenty feet.
Okay. Um, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans look good. Um, can I just ask a quick question? There's some pretty major trees on the back of, no issue with the proposed addition impacting those trees, I, I hope, yes.
Um, Mr. Robinson, I, I believe Eric Zacherson is on this call, and he could probably answer that better than I.
Eric, will you hustle and put your name and address on the record and please respond?
We can move on. I mean, I, I hope...
Eric, Eric is on here. Eric is on here. Go ahead, Eric, you've been unmuted.
Oh, thank you, sorry, I, I couldn't unmute myself. Um, yes, the question was, are we, we are trying to preserve the two, the trees in the, in the rear yard.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Chair, Madam Chair, Bob D'Amico has spoken on this one, so I just want to put him to the record. Regarding twenty-six Arlington Street, it's okay, although the width of the driveway is only eight foot eight. It can work since the average width of most cars today has been reduced to approximately seven feet.
Um, I'll be, uh, Madam Chair, I'd be curious if the, uh, what, what Mr. Hampton has to say.
Yes, but in the meantime, let's go ahead and get testimony. Is there anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, like no record in support of this proposal. Uh, we conducted a butters meeting on June second. Um, there were not concerns raised at the time. Uh, the applicant had been working with some direct butters regarding screening and buffering. Uh, we did hear from someone from the broader community, uh, that was interested in, uh, a more permeable surface for the driveway. I believe that's something that, uh, the applicant has taken a look at. Uh, they also went on to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, received their support as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Maura McCray from Council of Brighton's office. The council would like to go on record in support, um, right of that they use permeable favors in the driveway and that, uh, they go through some sort of BPDA design review for the project. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one raised hand. Annabelle, you've been unmuted. State your name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
I have no other raised hands, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hampton, please tell us what's going on.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. We oppose this with, uh, denial without prejudice. The, uh, the addition, the, the proposed project's too dense in our mind. And our opinion, and I respect Mr. D'Amico, is the, the off-street parking is confusing and especially that first parking space that's right up against the building. Uh, we're opposed to that as well.
Thank you.
Can I just address, Madam Chair, quickly, what, uh, Mr. Hampton just stated? Um, as part of this proposal, we had STAN Tech engineers come out and do a maneuverability study, and that has, and will gladly share that with the BPDA, is to, together with Mr. D'Amico, that shows that this is, um, satisfactory, um, getting in.
See, I think, I think the thing that concerns me is the density of this, because I'm wondering, um, what is the sense today of, of Arlington Street? And the second thing is whether, you know, they, the, the neighborhood continues to be, uh, overpopulated by students and, you know, is this just creating two additional units for, um, for, um, let's see, for, for student living?
So that's a really good point that you just brought up, Madam Chair. Um, there is a, uh, no undergraduate rental, um, provision that will be added to this, uh, if this project is to be approved.
Okay. Um, so given all that information, uh, from the BPDA and from the community, may I have a motion, please?
I'm pushing for denial without prejudice. I think it could be reworked, but just as it is now, doesn't seem...
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You opposed?
Aye, Eric.
Who's, who's, who's opposed? I'm sorry.
Eric was opposed.
Okay, for the record, Eric is opposed. Uh, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go back to a case I called earlier for the elevens. Uh, case BOA one one three six nine eight seven, fourteen oh three to fourteen oh five Dorchester Ave. Are you on?
He is on. Tam, you've been unmuted. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hold on two seconds, Madam Chair. I mean, uh... This is, hold on two seconds.
Okay.
Case BOA one one three six nine eight seven, fourteen oh three to fourteen oh five Dorchester Ave. This is proposed change of ar... This is proposed change of occupancy to an existing commercial space into a restaurant with takeout, the violation is Article 65, 68, Use and Regulations, a restaurant with takeout. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and our member of all, my name is Tam Nguyen. I live at 159 Naperville Ave, Dorchester Ave.
So, can you tell us, can you tell us what the name of the store is that you're proposing to put in, and if you have experience with takeout?
The name is not exactly the name, but we should have the fast food chicken, fried chicken.
Okay, and do you have any other takeout restaurants in the city?
It's not, ma'am. I have a family member that do a lot of restaurants in Texas, so will come back here and gather, open a restaurant together with our family.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine. I do, I mean, the plans show the trash and recycle bins looks like just out on the site on the bottom of the bank. I assume that's not, we're not, that will be allowed, but I just want to make sure.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kevin Tran from Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We hosted a butters meeting for the applicant on December 16th of 2020. We received no concerns from the community in the fuse corner. Civic Association is in support for this project, therefore, we would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Jill McEckern, City Councilor Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, with usual takeout language and for this applicant only.
Second. And did you say with design review for trash, et cetera, signage, et cetera?
Will there be new signage?
You know, you did raise the issue about trash, and I don't know how that gets taken care of.
If there is new signs, ISD will kick it to us anyway.
Okay.
Additional only. Kevin? Kevin?
Yes.
Can you please walk with this applicant so that he's very clear about what the takeout language is? Because it is very specific to Boston, and there's not necessarily a direct transference from where his previous experience might have been, okay? So, please, please be assistance and help him out. So, the motion, there's a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's now almost 1:45, and we're just getting to the 12:30, so let's all clap. We have three cases, so here we go. Case BOA 115-2401, 87 to 89 West Walnut Park. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family dwelling and extended living space into the basement and create a walkout unit in the basement. The violation is Article 55, Section 40, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 55, Section 8, a three-family dwelling, which is forbidden. Article 55, Section 9, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 55, Section 9, the usable open space is insufficient. And Article 55, Section 9.3, the dimension of the location of the main entrance. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members, or afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher, RCA LC with the business address of 1156 Dorchester Ave. Before you today's proposal to change the occupancy from an existing basement with garage parking, which is unusable, to create an additional 900-square-foot two-bedroom residential unit. This building does have a full walkout in the rear. We're proposing to regrade on the right side of the building when facing is an existing walkway. So, with the regrading, we would be introducing a new walkway with stairs that would accommodate two full-size windows into the bedrooms, and then a full walkout deck to the rear, as well as a 12-by-10 terrace for the property. We are proposing a new parking area and retaining wall in the rear. This slide here actually.
So, Mr. Christopher, what is the zoning district here?
I said Jamaica Plain neighborhood, Madam Chair.
Yes, but is it a one-family or a two-family?
Two-family.
So, two-family, what? Because this, the lot size is only 2,916 square feet usable, so this, so is it 5,000 square feet? Yep, it's, it looks like it's 2F 5,000.
That's correct.
Okay. So, this is half the size, 2,916, and you're proposing to build that unit in the basement? Tell us about the floor-to-ceiling height and the anticipated size of that unit and the floor-to-sill height, please.
The existing basement height is seven foot six. We would maintain that to create the minimum habitable head height, even if that meant having to excavate a little bit of the basement to make that work. Currently, the window height to the sill in the proposed basement would be two foot six on the walkway from the slab to the sill. We would have four windows on the walkway to egress into the bedroom, egress windows in and out of the bedroom. It would be a 900-square-foot two-bedroom unit.
And so, basically, is this a garage conversion into a dwelling unit?
The current owner, who was trying to join us, he had to step off on another call. I didn't expect to get back to us so quick. But yes, there is garage doors there, Madam Chair. Since he's on the building, they've never used it as parking. It doesn't function very well as interior parking.
The butter, too, has that same layout, so.
Right, and they don't use that, Madam Chair. We met extensively with the butters, who were actually happy and supported the project as a result of the grade change to the parking and the retaining wall. Currently, our rear and left of butters have drainage and water issues, and as a result of our stormwater retention system and retaining walls and regrading the site, we'd be able to solve those issues, along with creating an additional access space for the rear of butter to access their trash and get it out to the street on a clean, simple path.
And where's the utilities, the separate utilities?
In the basement, Madam Chair.
Okay, and it's accessed from.
There's an interior common stairwell off of that rear porch, which you can see in the pitch of it.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. It does look like a full walkout and regular-height windows in the bedroom.
Any questions from the board?
It looks like work has already begun. Is that the case?
No. There's a short form on, to rebuild the front porch, Mr. Eric, if that's what you're referring to?
Oh, just looking at the photographs.
Oh, no, those photos are all, that stuff has been there.
Okay. Anybody here to speak in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Aye, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tiffany Caballero here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant went before the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council, where they voted to approve this proposal on the basis of agreements that were reached with the butters, particularly around groundwater management, that since then have been met. The Mayor's Office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that, Eric.
This is straight approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, before I call the next case, I feel to mention, we do have a withdrawal, and I think there are two other deferrals, and hopefully they're on. But I'm going to make, I'm going to talk to the, right now, the West Newton Street. The case BOA 103-5651, 215 West Newton Street. We have a letter, they're withdrawing, so I'm going to make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Pardon, motion carries.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I don't know if 136 West 8th Street is on? Or 683 East 7th Street? Are either one of those on, because they are, my understanding, deferring.
Let's go ahead, and then we can deny them without prejudice if they're not on.
Very well. Following the next case, calling BOA 121-2283, 150 Quincy Street. This is erecting a new three-family dwelling with three proposed off-street parking on a vacant lot. The violation is Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the front yard is insufficient. And Article 50, Section 29, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the board. My name's Mike Palmer, 81 Seale Street in Roxbury. I'm the owner, as well, along with my wife. We're proposing to build a three-family on, on an empty lot at 150 Quincy Street. It's currently zoned for a three-family. And the variances that were set against us had to do with the insufficient bordering with butters.
So, tell us about, let's see, what we're interested in. Tell us about your side yard. What are you proposing and what's required by the zoning?
Okay, so, for the side yard, what's required is, on the left-hand side, we're actually meeting that, there's a 10-foot requirement where, and we're sitting at 12, so that's fine. On the right-hand side, it's the same 10-foot requirement, and we're, we are proposing five feet.
Okay, and are you providing any parking?
Yeah, one parking space per unit.
Okay. And let's see, a roof deck? Are you proposing a roof deck?
Nope.
No? And about, what's the size of each unit?
About 1,500 square feet.
And any occupancy in the basement?
No, unfinished, just a unfinished basement.
Okay. How are the plans? And why were you deferred the last time?
Oh, so we were deferred the last time because we were requested in meeting with Project Right, which is, you know, part of the Neighborhood Association, so we just deferred just so we could meet with them and chat with them.
And I see Mike Kuzo is on, so that's good. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans look good, very straightforward, no questions.
Is, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak, either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Jason Gant from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I'd like to go on record in support of this proposal. As Lomich already referred to, they primarily just preferred to meet with Project Right, and Project Right has given their full support of this project. I just urge them to continue working with Project Right as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we have letters of support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one raised hand. Michael, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please. Mike Kozu. Mike?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now I can, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Michael Kozu, Project Right, 320, the letter A, Blue Hoy Avenue. We want to go on record in support of this owner-occupied development. The owner met with members of the Blue Hoy, Quincy Howard, Aino Street Neighborhood Association, and there was a very fruitful and good discussion. We look forward to working with them.
I have no other raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, BPDA design review.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Following the next case, calling BOA 118-5823, 35 Foster Street. This is to add living space into the basement for the second floor only. And access is through the front of the main entrance for the second floor only and no passing through any unit. Violation is Article 51, Section 9, floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the owner, Lee Moore Yahalum, and her husband, Barack. Straightforward proposal to take what was an illegal basement apartment when my clients acquired this property last year, and freshen it up and turn it into extended living space for unit number two, just by providing some home office, working area, no bedrooms, and home gym, just, it's 586 square feet of usable living area there. On the right-hand side of the screen is the proposed basement area. Also, on the right-hand side of that lower elevation, of that floor plan, you can see that the stairway goes up to unit two and down to the basement, and that's the front door. The entrance to unit one is on the side of the house, on the, to the left of that. You can see there's a stairway, and the entrance to unit one is on the side of the house. The entrance to unit two is on the front of the house and has the access upstairs and then downstairs to the basement. There's also a common area in the front part of the basement. There's a bulkhead door out the back, so there's two means of egress, and there are egress windows as well. Ceiling height is ample, and it's actually, I had an opportunity to visit the property. It's nice and bright down there.
What does ample ceiling height mean?
We go to one of the elevation, it's more than 7'6".
Okay, and the second unit is how many, how many bedrooms?
Second unit is a three-bedroom unit.
Okay, because it's very rare that we approve residential space that's not connected to the unit where there is a separate space.
Yeah.
So.
But it is connected in the sense that the only stairway connection to the basement.
Got it, yeah. And is that the garage that we're seeing on the left elevation? What is that?
Yeah, that's an existing structure, Madam Chair, that was there. It's a cinder block structure that probably was a garage at some point. It's unheated, it has sliding glass doors on the front of what used to be a garage. It looks like it was previously used as like a tool shed, workbench area. It's not occupied space, and the tenants don't have access to it.
Mr. Robinson, how are the plans? And can you just look to see, because my eyesight isn't what it used to be, if there is a kitchen in that basement?
Look, I do not see any reference to a kitchen. There is laundry and a bathroom. It is called as office and living space.
Yep, there is no kitchen in the basement.
No kitchen is shown, and I think the section calls out 74, clear, and page 832 for the lower level. That's, that seems adequate. No questions. As you mentioned, it's a little odd that we look at a separate space, but I sort of understand, I think, the access has a piece of it.
Okay, any questions from the board?
So, if the, that stairwell from the second floor to the basement is the only access, how are the utilities accessed by each of the units?
So, if we go back to the floor plan, there is a common room in the front of the basement that you can get to through the front door, again, which goes up to the second floor and down to the basement. that you can get to through the front door, again, which goes up to the second floor and down to the basement.
Aye.
Right there, in the front. Yep.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Like to go record a non-opposition for this proposal. Uh, we conducted a Butters meeting on August nineteenth. Uh, at the time, there were no concerns raised at the meeting. Um, later, the Butters got in contact with us, or their family, expressing concerns with, uh, would have been some issues with construction on the property in the past, as well as concerns about Airbnbs. Um, speaking of the applicant, they insisted that there has not been an Airbnb. Airbnb's being used while the owners have been, been owning this property. Uh, confirmed with ISD that there was an application done of December of two thousand and twenty, but the application was abandoned. Um, they went on to the Brighton Nelson Improvement Association and received their support. Uh, we think that if the board does end up supporting this project, uh, there should be a proviso, or it should be clearly communicated that the applicant needs to work with Butters on any type of construction management plan. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have one raised hand. Mary Ann, you've been unmuted. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, my name is Mary Ann Kaiser. My mother is Bridget Leyden. She's a direct of Butters. She's at thirty-seventh Foster Street, and we are in opposition of the plan. Um, since the owner has purchased this property, she had contractors come in, damaged my mother's property with a dumpster truck. The owner of the dumpster truck admitted fault, paid for half the damage, and told us to go after the owner for the other half. Both I've made phone calls to the owner, as well as my mother's property manager, with no response from her. My mother is eighty years old and has to walk on that property. Also, um, at the time, it was the height of COVID. Her contractor came to my mother's door, knocked on the door, and asked to put extension cords through my mother's windows, so they would have electric, electricity, since they didn't have any at the time. And when my mother said no, the owner called me, and I said, there's some obvious safety issues here, and for a host of other reasons, it was not appropriate to have a contractor put an extension cord through my mother's window.
So let me, let me just backtrack for a minute. I know there've been some operational issues between you and your neighbor, but tell us about why, what, what your concerns are about extension into the basement for this unit.
Yeah, so, you know, during the, um, my mother was never notified. I know Connor Newman said something about there was a, uh, neighbors meeting. My mother doesn't leave her house. She's never received notice. There have been short-term renters. This woman has, the owner, has never lived in this unit. She at least had two short-term renters in the unit, because as my mother sits on the porch every day, she talks to the people that are renting the unit, and they tell her, we're only here for two weeks, we're only here for a month. So she had at least two short-term renters in there. Based on the plans, looking at all of the quote-unquote sleeping areas and bedrooms, it is a two-family. It looks like they're trying to create some sort of boarding house or co-living arrangement in this two-family. It is very congested, as you can imagine, in the middle of Brighton Center. There is no parking, and it does pose a safety issue, that they're just trying to cram as many people into beds in this house as they possibly can.
Okay, thank you.
Mary, respond briefly.
No, not yet.
Uh, Madam Chair, I have no other raised hands.
Is Moira on or Annabelle on?
She was on here.
I believe Annabella was on, yes.
She was on, and she just disappeared.
And I, I can report, Madam Chair, that we did present to BAIA, and they voted to support our proposal.
Hey, Ms. Lacass. Um...
On the issue of, um, occupancy, I submitted to the record, um, to Stephanie Haynes, and she has them in the file. There are two leases in place for the property. Unit one has a lease, um, with tenants that took effect on August first of two thousand and twenty-one. And then unit two has been occupied under lease, uh, since September one of two thousand and twenty-one. And both of those leases for unit one and unit two are in the file and are the currently existing leases. So it is, it is not a short-term rental property. Um, my client had indicated to me when I first met her that she was contemplating that, and that she had an application pending, and I told her that that would actually not be a permissible use, and that she should switch to long-term leases, and that is what she has done.
Okay, so I think this goes back again to the question of need. If, what is the need for the space in the basement? If these are rented, rented, if unit two's lease just started in September?
Mm-hmm.
What is the need for this space? I could understand if it was a, a homer, a homeowner occupied with need for expansion space in the basement. But these are, these are both leased out, um, so can you talk to us, you know, briefly, very briefly, about again what the need is?
Uh, the, the need is, um, that with the work-from-home model, a lot of people like to just have a little extra space to create a home office, or to just get away from the living area. Um, there are leases which are roommate situations. Some roommates may be doing hybrids, some may be working from home entirely. The space is already there, as I said, it was, it was when my clients acquired the property, a basement unit. So they didn't create the space. They've cleaned it up very nicely, and the space is already there, if you will. And it's just an opportunity for the residents of unit two to get away from their roommates, to go downstairs and have a nice office space, to have a workout.
These, sorry, are these, are these tenants, um, college students?
They, they are not, and my client is on, and she can speak to her tenant selection process. Um, she is very careful. She owns other properties and does not rent to undergraduate students. She spent over six hundred thousand dollars on renovating units one and two, and is not...
Financial, um, financial, uh, needs do not feature in our decision?
Not mentioning as a need, mentioning as she doesn't want to rent to students who will destroy her nicely renovated apartments, and has a much more professional, uh, tenant.
Okay, so, um, given all that information, um, may I have a motion, please?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve, um, but the landlord, uh, needs to, uh, talk to the neighbor.
We, we shall do that, Mr. Ehrlich.
I'll second, Secretary. Uh, can we, should we put a proviso of no bedrooms or no living space down there, or something?
Yes.
You know, I, I frankly, I'm not convinced that, that this, this, the right thing will happen here, but, uh, there is a motion with, uh, and what are you, uh, proposing? A proviso with no bedrooms in the basement?
Uh, I'll accept that.
That's, and that's a...
I'm asking, I'm asking.
That was what I was, I was seeking to add, yes.
Okay. Any, anything else? Um, so there's a motion with a proviso of no bedrooms. That's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed, Joe.
And who is that? Joe's opposed?
Yep.
I too am in, I too am in, opposed, but with, uh, motion carries.
There is only a six-member...
No, no, it's a six-member board.
Sorry, Sherry is opposed.
Sherry is opposed, so the motion does... So the motion does not carry, so it's been denied.
You have your time.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'm gonna go back to two cases that we called earlier. I don't know if they're gonna call them individually. Case BOA one-one-seven-two-seven-one-nine-one-thirty-six West Eighth Street. Are they on?
Okay, it is now, uh, two, two oh eight. The lease was scheduled for twelve-thirty.
I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next case, calling BOA one-one-nine-zero-one-nine-five-six-eighty-three East Seventh Street. Are they on? Now, two oh eight, I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So the meeting is now adjourned. Um, next time we meet, board will be in, um...
November ninth.
No, in November, November, November ninth with a new mayor.
And the committee is November fourth.
Happy Halloween.
Happy Halloween.
Things in between. Okay. So see you guys with all these auspicious things on the horizon, okay?
Take care, bye.